Here comes the sun, here comes the sun, and I say it's alright.
One for mine, two for the shop, three get right now, go catch the ball. Don't you step on my blue spray shoes.
Step on my face, write my name all over the place. Do anything that you want to. I'm honey little machine.
Don't you step on my blue spray shoes. Do anything, lay on my blue spray shoes. Do anything, lay on my blue spray shoes. Ah, massive!
L is for the way you look at me. O is for the only one I see. B is very, very extraordinary. E is even more than anyone that you adore. And love is all that I can give to you. Love is more than just a game for two. Two and love can make it. Take my heart and please don't break it. Love was made for me and you. L is for the way you look at me. O is for the only one I see. C is very, very extraordinary. E is even more than anyone that you adore. And love is all that I can give to you. Love is more than just a game for two. Two and love can make it. Take my heart and please don't break it. Love was made for me and you. Love was made for me and you. Love was made for me and you.
Rockin' guitar all day long, hoppin' and muppets and singin' in song. On the birds on Cambridge Street, want to hear the rock and go treat treat. Oh, rockin' treat, 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 rockin' rockin' treat. Really don't know what I'm rockin', really not rockin' now. I'm small and tricky, and a little bird in a tall oak tree. I don't know, a big black crow, love there, big single bird go.
How much is that doggie in the window? I do really tell. How much is that doggie in the window? I do hope that doggies for sale. I must take a trip to California and leave my poor sweetheart alone. If he has a dog, he won't be lonesome, and the doggie will have a good home. How much is that doggie in the window? The one with the wiggly tail? How much is that doggie in the window? I do hope that doggies for sale. Woof, woof.
Hey mama, hey mama, look around, everybody's going to a brand new sound. Hey mama, hey mama, follow me, I am singing that I once appeared. Let go, don't fall the past now, say hello, love in your heart. I know that the world's been fast now, you're getting so much stronger.
Welcome to the sixth team, oh, 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 oh. Oh, mama, welcome to the sixth team, oh, 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 oh. Oh, mama, show, show, show. Welcome to the sixth team, oh, 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 oh. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If everybody had a motor suit across the USA, then everybody'd be surfing like California A. You'd see 'em wearing their bandies, we're Archie Santos too, a bushy-bushy bonnet hair, surfing USA.
We'll catch 'em surfing at Del Mar, Ventura County line, Santa Cruz and Trestor, Australia's Arabbee. All over Manhattan and down to Hiney Way.
Everybody's got a surfin', surfing USA.
Taggartines and Swammy, Pacific Palace State, then open rain sunset, we down to Beach LA. All over Hawaii, at Swammy Arbe.
Everybody's got a surfin', surfing USA.
Everybody's got a surfin', surfing USA.
Everybody's got a surfin', surfing USA.
Somewhere over the rainbow, there's a rainbow. A dream that you dare to dream really do come true. Someday I'll wish upon a star and wake up where the clouds are far behind me. Where troubles melt like lemon drops away above the chimney tops, that's where you'll find me. Somewhere over the rainbow, birds fly. Fly over the rainbow, I can't hide.
I know the better man of myself, so I'm gonna let it do all the time. Fell in fear upon my back, I said, "Don't look back, just keep on walking." I came across a place in the middle of nowhere with a big black horse and a cherry tree. No, marry me.
The sun come out tomorrow, bet your bottom dollar that tomorrow there'll be sun. Just thinking about tomorrow clears away the club webs and the sorrow. Till there's none, when I'm stuck with a day that's gray and lonely, I just stick out my chin and grin and say, "Oh." The sun will come out tomorrow, and I hang on till tomorrow. I want me, tomorrow, tomorrow, I love ya, tomorrow, and I'm a day away.
When I'm stuck with a day that's gray and lonely, I just stick out my chin, grin, and say, "Oh."
You with the sad eyes, don't be discouraged, oh, I realize it's hard to take courage in a world full of people. You can lose sight of it all and talk me still, such a makes feel so small.
I see your true colors shining through, I see your true colors, that's why I love you. So don't be afraid, so I can show you true colors, true colors. I'm beautiful like a rainbow.
Show me a smile then, don't be unhappy, can't remember when I last saw you laughing. If this world makes you crazy and you've taken all you can bear, you call me up because you know I'll be there.
I see your true colors shining through, I see your true colors, that's why I love you. So don't be afraid, so I can show you true colors, true colors.
Everything is grand, the whole wide world in the palm of my hand. Everything is perfect, it's finding its place, I can't seem to wipe this smile off my face. Life's a happy song when you're sung by a shy singing song.
Everything is great, everything is grand, I got the whole wide world in the palm of my hand. Everything is perfect, it's finding its place, I can't seem to wipe this smile off my face. Some of the coal, some of the sauce, some of the... Everything that I need, everything that I need, why if I don't need nothing, nothing to need, I can't be...
If you're right here next to me, you've got everything that you need, right in front of you. Nothing's stopping you, nothing that you can't do, that's all that's on your mind.
Happy song.
Life's a happy song, life's a happy song, with your song and I sing along.
What's their name? Can we, before these young boys and girls leave, can we give them a big hand? They're the Temecula Valley Children's Choir. Thank you, you know, for us, those of us who sit up here, we're often in meetings upstairs until a minute or two before seven, when we rush down here to start the meeting. So we often don't get to hear any of the musical presentations that occur at the beginning of the meeting. So we got to come down a little early today, and we need to do that more often, guys, because it's fun. So thank you again. Okay, then officially, I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. You've heard the prelude music, we're going to start as we usually do with an invocation this evening, coming from Pastor William Wrench of Calvary Baptist Church. Pastor, if you would come up front, please, and then we'll have the flag salute led by Councilmember Mary Ann Edwards this evening. Please rise.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we come before your presence this evening in these chambers to do the business of the city, and we ask, Lord, that you would administer the proceedings, that you would guide us as we have decisions to make, that you would give wisdom to all of those that are involved in making these decisions and commitments and the various commemorations and so forth. We pray, Father, that all of these things would be done decently and in order, and we think especially today, Father, of the tragedy that's occurred in Nepal and the thousands of victims there and the rescue efforts that are ongoing, we pray, Lord, that you would intervene in that and that you would minister the most urgent needs to the most urgent needs of those there in that place of tragedy. And we ask your blessing on those that have sacrificed of their time and talents to go clear across the world, to be of assistance to those in that great need. We just pray that your grace would be very evident there in Kathmandu and the surrounding areas where the earthquake has occurred. We pray also for our own nation and the difficulties that are going on in Baltimore, even tonight, and we ask your intervention there. We pray that we, as Americans, would come to the place where we recognize that it's not a matter of races, but that we're all of one race, the human race, and, Father, I pray that you'd help us to recognize that there's bad people in all races and there's good people in all races, and there are, Father, we understand, folks that are less than noble in places of authority, but the great majority of persons in leadership and authority do want the best for their people and their cities and their communities. and their cities and their communities. And I pray, Father, that you'd help us to see calm restored and order restored. We pray that you'd minister to those that have been hurt and in both sides of the situation. We ask your help there. We know that ultimately, Father, the answer is not from us, but it's from you, and we pray that you would, that you would work in all of that. We ask, as our city deals with matters that are important to us here locally, that you'd guide us all. We thank you for the good leadership that you have provided for us here in the community and those that really do have the desire, the heart of the citizens in mind as they make these decisions. And, Father, we understand too, that not all the time things go the way we would hope they would. Sometimes decisions are made that are contrary to what we'd like to see, but we're interested in the greater good, and we pray, Father, that you'd help us to recognize that, that that's the heart of the leadership here. We pray for our own police force here in our own city, and we ask that you'd protect them and help them to be wise in their decisions and help us as citizens to be mindful of the laws and to recognize that, Lord, we have a, we have a system of laws and justice to, not just to hinder us, but to protect us and to make life more comfortable. We ask your blessing now on the rest of this evening and your guidance, and we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
As we say our pledge this evening, let's remember that we live in the greatest country on earth, and let's remember the men and women who have sacrificed for centuries giving their all, and the men and women who sacrifice today to protect us, because freedom is not free. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
A pleasure.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Mayor Comacher.
I am here as well. We have a couple of presentations and proclamations this evening. The first one is a certificate of achievement that will be presented to Justin Cameron Moreno of Troop 301 for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Once again, we have another Eagle Scout in our midst. Justin, are you here?
There he is.
Come up to the podium, please. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have this certificate for you, and let me read it. It says, "City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. The City Council of the City of Temecula commends the outstanding achievements of Justin Cameron Moreno of Troop 301. We congratulate Justin for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of Justin's accomplishment and wish him continued success in his promising and bright future." And that's going to be yours. We also, some years ago, at the urging, I believe, of Councilmember Edwards, we had a special pin crafted, a badge. So we only give those to Eagle Scouts. They're kind of a collector's item. There aren't, there, there's a bunch of them out there, but not thousands. And so, I know you need another pin like you need a hole in that, but anyway, you've earned it, and so, with pleasure. So this is yours, and that's yours, but you got to tell us about your Eagle project. Right here at the microphone, okay?
Okay, so my Eagle project was, well, how I ran into my Eagle project was that originally I was going to be doing renovations at a church, but due to problems with them trying to sell the place, I eventually couldn't do it, just some time constrictions. And I was originally brought up to a place called Dorlan Mountain Arts Colony, which is a little bit ways up in the mountains. I don't know if many of you know about it.
Yes.
And I fundraised to get an underwater weed whacker through recycling that cost around $750, and the place had recently taken damages from a fire in 2009, and it hadn't been renovated since. So along with repairing all of the burnt damages from just trees and rubble from buildings that were just scattered along, I also cleared out the underwater reeds from the lakes that were completely unseeable due to all the reeds and just debris that was built up in the lakes. And that's about it.
Wow.
Very good. Thank you, Justin, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
It never ceases to amaze us in our city how many of our boys in scouting achieve the rank of Eagle. It's really, it's quite an accomplishment, and it seems like we just have another one here in this chamber every two weeks, so it's, it's great. Our next is a proclamation concerning May being Mental Health Month. Do we have somebody here to accept that? Well, hi there. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good. If I may, let me read this. It's a little bit longer than the last one. "City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas mental illness can impact anyone regardless of age, background, employment, education, and income level, and whereas many treatments for serious mental illnesses in combination with treatment and recovery supports are highly effective, allowing people to maintain their quality of life and their involvement with their families and communities. And whereas the National Institute of Mental Health reports that one in four adults, approximately 57.7 million Americans, experience a mental health disorder in a given year, and that half of all Americans experience a mental disorder at some point in their lives. And whereas the United States Surgeon General reports that 10% of children and adolescents in the United States suffer from serious emotional and mental disorders that cause significant functional impairment. And whereas the Riverside County Behavioral Health Commission is presenting Live Life Well: A Mental Health Fair on May 21, 2015, at Fairmont Park in Riverside in support of the May is Mental Health Month observance. And whereas the Mental Health America has promoted the observance of May is Mental Health Month since 1949 in order to increase awareness and understanding of mental health. And whereas encouraging awareness of mental health issues and promoting wellness and recovery for those with mental health needs are important values for every community. Now therefore, I, Jeff Comacher, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2015, to be May is Mental Health Month." So we appreciate what you do. And if you'd like to say a few words?
I'll try to keep it to...
Please.
I'll try to keep it to a few.
Okay.
My name's Walter Hessler. I'm a retired psychiatrist. I live near Temecula, and I'm a member of the Riverside County Behavioral Health Commission, and I'm very pleased to accept this on behalf of the commission. It will be displayed at the May is Mental Health Month event at Fairmont Park, which is May 21. It's a Thursday. Doesn't work too well for everybody, but it's a May 21, Thursday, from 1 to 6. And it's a very nice event. It's an annual event. There are entertainments, there are activities for children, there are health screenings, there is a free lunch. And hundreds of people attend. A good time is had by all, and most importantly, there are information booths about all of the, I'm going to say all, I think all, of the programs, substantially all of the programs that Riverside County Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse offers. I wanted to say one other thing. There has been a major expansion of the mental health facilities here in Temecula last year. Not everyone knows about that. I lived here, I've been a behavioral health commissioner for two years, have been here for 10 years, and until I was a commissioner, I didn't even know where these facilities are. But they're on County Center Drive. On the north side, kind of opposite Western Eagle, is the adult outpatient, the older adult outpatient, and the substance abuse treatment programs. Very large, pleasant offices, very well-staffed. And on the south side of County Center Drive, kind of in with the county library, is the children's program. And they, they do focus on treating the lower-income people, but everyone is welcome, everyone with the problem is welcome to show up. They will be interviewed, triaged, and if they cannot, if they're not the appropriate source of help, they will direct you to the appropriate sources of help. So make use of them. It's very nice facilities and good people. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Our final presentation this evening will be from the Rancho California Water District, and if you've been reading the paper or watching TV, I'm sure you're all aware that we are in a serious drought condition, and there are some new rules and regulations that are discussed right now as being imposed before too long. So we're going to hear about water shortages and what we can all do to help.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jeff Armstrong, and I am the interim general manager with Rancho California Water District, and that's exactly what we wanted to talk about tonight, is the drought, and not only to kind of really give you a picture of what the drought really is and how it's going to affect us, but what we're prepared to do and what we need the community to do as well. So I have a presentation that's about maybe 10 minutes. It's a lot. I'm going to try to do it really quickly to make it efficient. Also with me is our assistant general manager, Rich Williamson, and Megan Valencia, our public information officer. So the first thing I wanted to do is just show you the area that Rancho California Water District serves. Here's the city of Temecula. Our boundaries are this sort of red area out here. We go all the way out to the wine country, Glen Oaks, Bay Lake, and then to the west we go up to Marietta, La Cresta, and Duluth. And so that's really the area that we serve, and, but for sure, we encompass the majority of the city of Temecula. As you mentioned, we're in a, we're in a drought. 82% of the state is in what's considered either an extreme or exceptional drought conditions, and it's been brought on by four years worth of, worth of really record events from, from dry years to high temperatures to no snowpack to low rainfall. Rancho California Water District is impacted by the drought. We have really three, three supplies for water. We have water that we import, that we purchase from Metropolitan of Southern California. We have our local supply, a groundwater basin, and we have recycled water. And I wanted to mention that we actually use 100% of the recycled water that comes out of our sewer treatment plants to beneficial use for irrigating golf courses, parks, and landscape. So what I want to do is show you how the drought impacts our imported water and our local water supply. So first of all, our import water. Import water comes into Southern California, down here in the yellow by the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, and they import water from the Colorado River, which comes from Lake Powell, Lake Mead, Lake Mojave, Lake Havasu, and then through the Colorado River Aqueduct into Southern California. That's one source of their water. The other source is Northern California in the Sierra Nevada Mountains. And so this is really, I'm going to show you some pictures here in a second, but just to let you know how this works, in case you don't, but the Sierra Nevadas is really our natural water reservoir. The snow that occurs in the wintertime melts during the spring and the summer, and it fills the reservoirs. And so as we go throughout the summertime, we take water out of the reservoirs. Lake Orville, Lake Shasta are two major ones. We take water out of those through the Bay Delta and then down the California Aqueduct to Southern California. So very important is that as we're taking water out of these reservoirs, that the snowpack is there, that that snow melt occurs to replenish those. So this is where they take samples of the snowpack. This is April 1, 2010, and so you can see the snow there. This is the same exact location, April 1, 2015, and you can see there's absolutely no snow there. So this really gives you an idea of what the snowpack levels look like this year. This is a picture of Lake Orville, one of our major reservoirs. This is what it looks like when it's full, and this is what it looks like in 2015. So you can really get a picture of how low these reservoirs are. This is a picture of Lake Mead. This is Hoover Dam, and you can see how the water level is when it's normal and full, and this is what Lake Mead looks like down below today. So the point of these pictures is to really emphasize that the drought and the impact on our import water supply is real. This is a chart that shows local rainfall. The line represents the average rainfall for the Temecula Valley, and these last three years, you can see we've been having not only less than average rainfall, but declining rainfall amounts. This impacts the amount of local water we have because the rainfall recharges our aquifer here. So what is the impact of all of this to us over the next, next year? Import water supply from Metropolitan is going to be cut by 15%. So effective July 1, we're going to have 15% water, less water than we do today. That's, that's been voted on and being implemented by Metropolitan. Our native well, because we don't have the rainfall to replenish the aquifer, we're seeing a 15% reduction in that as well. And then, as some of you may know, early in April, the governor issued an executive order to mandate a 25% reduction in urban water use in the state of California. The framework for how that's being, going to be implemented is under, under, under work right now, but as it stands right now, our region needs to cut 36%, and that's 36% reduction between June and February of next year. So again, the drought is real. We are really going to truly have less water to, to supply, to provide to our customers, and so we do need to do something here to respond to that. So what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about Rancho California Water District's drought response plan. We do have a plan, and that plan really has kind of three major components to it. We have our water budgets, and I'm going to go into that in detail in a second, and that's really the main, main element that we have in place to deal with the drought. We're going to increase our communication and education. In addition to that, we do have programs to help residents become more water use efficient, and I'm going to talk about some of those really quick as well. So our water budgets, every customer in the Rancho California service area, and really in this whole region, whether you're Temecula, Marietta, Corona, Paris, Menifee, everybody has water budgets in this area. And our budgets for our customers are all customized to each individual property, so it's based off of the number of people that you have living in your residence, as well as the amount of landscape you have on your property. And what those water budgets do is, is we, through those water budgets, we communicate what an efficient amount of water use is for your property. So what we are going to do is we're going to reduce those water budgets to a level that we need to reduce those to, to comply with the governor's executive order and the amount of water supply that we're going to have for this area. And what, that will probably take place between May and July 1. I'm not sure exactly when that's going to happen. And the amount of the reduction, we're not exactly sure yet either, but more than likely what will happen is your indoor water budget will remain the same, but your outdoor water budget for outdoor landscape will be reduced to either 60, 65, 60, to even 55%. We're not sure yet. We need to still see what the numbers are. So it's going to be a significant reduction for the amount of water that you'll have for outside landscape. So this is a copy of a bill, and this bill, on every bill, we have our water budgets, and there are these graphs right here, and I blew this part up a little bit. Hope you can see this, but this is a really important part of your bill, and this is really something that you should pay attention to as we go through this period of time, because it's going to really help you understand what you need to do and what kind of water use you need to stay within your water budget and to help meet this, this target. So if you look at these bars, what you'll see is a dark bar. That's, that represent, well, these are months going across the bottom, so this is January, February, March. You can see a dark bar. This is the actual use that occurred in January for this customer. The gray bar is what their budget was. So in that month, the customer was less than what their budget. They did pretty good. In February, the dark bar is a little bit higher than the gray bar, so they used a little bit more than their budget. And then if you look to the right, you'll see these blue bars over here, and what those are, are, they're the forecasts of what your budget will be in those next coming months, and that's really what you want to pay attention to. You want to really try to adjust your actual water use to try to hit these, these forecast amounts in each of those months. And if you do that, you'll be doing what you need to do to stay within the reductions that we're going to have in place. So this is really an important part to pay attention to. If we don't comply and we don't meet the reductions, there are significant penalties that are going to occur. And to give you an example of what, what a customer would experience if they don't stay within their budgets, today, a customer in tier one for their indoor water use pays $0.66 a unit. They pay $1.50 in tier two for their outdoor landscape. By July 1, if they don't stay within their first two tiers, their efficient water budget, they won't go to the tier three and pay $2.49. They're going to go up to an amount that could be up to $13 a unit. So it's a very significant increase in the cost that a customer will incur if they go outside of their water budget. So again, the key is to look at the budgets and stay within those. And I'll just mention, those aren't, those are, that increases are penalties that are being passed to Rancho California Water District, and we would collect those and pass those on to Metropolitan Water District. So communication, again, the budget-based tiered rates, those water budgets, they really do communicate efficient water use, so pay attention to those. We are really trying to increase our communication within the community to, to really help all of the residents understand what the impact is and what they need to do. And I have to say, we appreciate extremely the staff at the city. We've had a number of meetings with Aaron and with Greg, and they've been wonderful, and we're coming up with a number of ideas where we can... And we're coming up with a number of ideas where we can partner together to really help the community reach this goal. So this is one of those opportunities, and we're grateful for that. We're working with them on getting some new signs out in the community. We've talked about having a drought workshop here because you get a lot more people here at the city at your meetings than we do at the Water District. And so to be able to tap into your cloud and to draw people in would also be helpful. And then, of course, we're going to be reaching out to our customers, and there's also great information on our website as well. Additionally, during this time, there are, there's another tool that we have in place that is now available on Google Play and will be available on Apple Store any day now. But we have two applications that you can download, and simply what they are is applications that you can download to your phone. And if you're in the community and you see examples like these of water waste and inefficient water use, you can take a picture of that with that application and just send it directly to the Water District. We'll receive that, and we'll go out and investigate and talk to those, to the residents or the properties that are doing that. So we also have a lot of programs to help customers reduce water use. If you go to our website, this is our main page, homepage, right on the very top left is this brown button that says Drought Watch. If you click on that, it will give you information about the drought, and it will also provide information and links to programs to help you reduce your water use, become more water efficient. And some of those include things like free sprinkler nozzles that are more water use efficient, and turf removal rebates. And that's really something that everybody's going to need to consider is reducing the amount of turf that isn't really functional at your property. And addition to that, if you are not staying within your budget, you can contact us, and we'll send somebody to your property and help you look at what's taking place at your property and give you some ideas and suggestions, and also the programs that you can take advantage of to help reduce your water use to comply with and meet those new reductions. So last night, we actually had an award ceremony. We have just like, this was wonderful, sitting here for the first half an hour, listening to this chorus of this Temecula Children's Chorus. So we had a contest with children in the local schools, and K-5 to the poster contest. That was really, they came up with posters on how to use water efficiently and just, when you look at the posters, what you found is that they just, everything on every poster is something that if you read it and you did that, it would be something that would make a lot of sense. And they have just great ideas, and they're very talented. This one, right in the middle right here, is a picture of a faucet with gold coming out of it, and it says, "Water is like our liquid gold, and we should treat it as a treasure." So it's just really creative, great things. And then, over to the right, we had a contest with high school students to design a kids' menu. And so four restaurants in Temecula will have these kids' menus for the whole year for the restaurant, and each one of them has activities for kids to do, and they're all water savings-related and tips and whatnot. So anyways, just great stuff in the community to try and help educate the kids and for the future. So just to summarize, the drought, as you see from the pictures, it is real. We do need to reduce our water use. The main thing that residents can do is look at their water budgets and stay within those. They are going to be reduced in the next, within the next couple months. And if you need help, contact the Rancho California Water District, go to our website, look for some information there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Do you have any questions, Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Nice presentation, very informative. I just have a couple of questions. When you talk about reducing the water budget, if somebody's already conserving, in other words, they're just going to be meeting their reduced budget. You're not changing the budget for the property, you're, or you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, let's say a customer's already really efficient, and they're staying underneath their water budgets already, and we reduce that water budget. If they're that efficient, it will have no impact on that customer.
Got it. Okay, got it. And then how do you know what's indoor use and outdoor use?
So we, well, we don't really know the difference between what is being used inside and outside. We assume that the first amount of water that's being used is all being used on the inside.
So if I understand, what you, you assign a budget based on the number of people in the household?
Right.
And then when it hits that, you assume that everything after that is...
Is being used outside.
Is being used outside.
Correct.
Okay, real good. One other question. What if somebody was proactive and let their, stopped watering their turf and let it go brown? And now rebates are available for having done that? Is there, are they able to go back and retroactively do that? In other words, they were good people, three months ago, they stopped watering it, now there's rebates, they'd like to, the turf's not there to tear out anymore.
Right.
What do they do?
So the way the rebate program is right now today, they would not qualify for the rebate. The turf has to be alive to get the rebate. However, there's a lot of feedback on that, and we're hoping that that is something that changes and that you can still qualify for the rebate.
Who would make that?
With Metropolitan of Water District of Southern California.
Who would make that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's problematic if you can push for that, because, I mean, the propensity would be, well, I'll green it up again.
Right.
Put in the application, and then let it go, you know?
No, it's a good point. I mean, and what, you know, we're going to be hoping that customers do the, even if you haven't done it yet and you do it now, I mean, we still would want you to qualify for the rebate, and we still would want you to take that action now today too, to reduce that water use.
People have photos of their home. If they showed you photos of green turf and photos of letting it die, would that qualify? Or is it still, you don't know?
Well, the way it is today is it has to be alive. So, but your point is very valid, and it is being expressed.
Okay.
Thanks.
I have a question, Jeff.
Yeah, Mary Ann?
Thank you. And I know we met last week, so thank you for, you know, double information. Are residents or users going to have an opportunity to adjust, or will they just get a surprise bill because they've gone over their allotment?
Yeah. There's not going to be a lot of time to adjust. And as much outreach as we do and communication that we do, what we find it's very hard to get the attention of everybody, and it's usually when they get the bill that somebody starts to see something and ask questions.
Yeah. So I know you're sending out bills now, and you've got things enclosed in those bills saying...
Right.
There's going to be a major reduction.
Yes.
And why?
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, that's a little bit of notice, but...
Right. It is. And part of the problem right now is we still don't know exactly what the cut needs to be, because the framework still hasn't been decided on yet. So it's sort of moving pieces still right now.
So will ratepayers actually have a chance to know what the cut will be before it's imposed?
Yeah, well, I think what we're hoping is that within the next couple weeks, we make a decision on what that cut's going to be, and we start communicating it immediately. And then, you know, more than likely, it will be in effect by July 1st. You know, a little sooner probably would help too, but we get, you have to deal with the issue that you're, you know, describing right now. We've got to give some notice too.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? That's about it. Jeff, appreciate you being here and great information, and all we can say to everybody is this won't be the first time you hear it in this chamber, and everybody has to do their part, so...
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The good news is, without a doubt, it will rain and snow again at some point, and this drought condition will be over. I remember when I was quite young, growing up in New York City, there was a similar situation, and the water company came out with two slogans. I, I don't know, I hope I can say them here, but they were all over TV. I guess I can say them. One was, "Don't flush for everything."
[laughing]
And the other was, "Save water, shower with a friend." So while I'm not advocating that, I'm only indicating that it's not the first time an area has gone through this kind of drought. It won't be the last, and the situation will certainly improve over time. Okay, with that, do we have any public speakers tonight? How many?
Mr. Mayor, we have three under public comments.
Okay, great. Let me read the rules. Total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item, and each speaker in that category is limited to five minutes. So with that, call the first speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Jody McClay, to be followed by Jimmy Moore.
Good evening, Ms. McClay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and distinguished council members, as well as staff. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jody McClay. I am currently the Assistant Superintendent for Temecula Valley Unified School District, and I have had the very proud pleasure of serving our community since 1998. I began as an Assistant Principal at Rancho Elementary School. I then moved on to Principal of Nicholas Valley Elementary School, then as a Director for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and now for the past five years, I have served our students in this valley as the Assistant Superintendent for Ed Services. I'm here this evening to set the record straight on a previous public comment that was presented to you on April 20th of this year. Evidently, the claim was made that the California Department of Education found fault with TVUSD and alleged that there was a misappropriation of funds within our Special Education Department. This is untrue, plain and simple. I was fortunate to participate in the Final Review Summary Conference, where a team of CDE reviewers made statements like the following. TVUSD is doing a great job. We are very impressed. TVUSD has built solid, strong programs that are attracting families to the region, and TVUSD is providing fantastic services for special education students. It was truly an honor to hear their validations for the hard work of all of our teachers, administrators, and parents combined. One of the comments that CDE said in their written report, and I will quote this part, was a total of 40 school district staff member salaries who were not assigned to teach special education students received a portion of their salaries from special education funds during the 2013-2014 school year. So again, no accusation of misappropriation. When we investigated the statement, it was determined that the 40 teachers, in many cases, were referring to general education teachers who substituted or covered per se during their prep or their release period for another teacher to attend an IEP meeting. That extra duty pay for the general education teacher who was acting as a substitute during that period was charged to special education exactly how it should have been. Typically, a substitute teacher is hired for the day and paid by special education to cover teachers' attendance at these meetings. However, if a substitute is not available and/or the job doesn't fill, general education teachers, particularly at the 612 level, because they all have a release period built into their school day, those teachers are often offered the opportunity to go in and cover that class for what's called extra duty. And these are paid just as the substitute would have been paid by special education because IEP attendance is a function of special education law. This scenario has been shared with CDE and accepted by them. It's also interesting to note that special education funding is insufficient to address all costs. Fiscal services confirmed with me just today that whenever we charge the special education budget for any cost, $5 out of every $9 comes from non-special education dollars. That means that more than half...
Liam, sorry, your time is up. Please summarize if you would.
I'm out of time. Well, I would encourage anyone who wants more information to attend a school board meeting on May 19th to see a full presentation of the CDE report, or to call me. I would be happy to discuss it with you further. I'm thankful for this opportunity. I'm thankful for the service that you provide our great city. Our children are blessed.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jimmy Moore, to be followed by Carl Nielsen.
Mr. Jimmy Moore, good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and council members, and staff, and audience. Boy, a lot of audience tonight, too. That's great. I'm here representing the OSHA program at Cal State San Marcos, as I've done several times in the past. We've just published our new catalog for the summer session, and classes will begin here in Temecula on the 19th of July. And in the catalog, it says, "Location to be determined." But I found out today that we are finally, finally leaving City Hall and going over to the old City Hall, the Entrepreneur Center, and now I guess it's the Temecula Education Center, and we will begin classes there, because they finally got the elevator fixed. And we're happy to see that, even though it's been very nice to be able to use City Hall for the last year or so. We'll have classes starting on the 19th of June, going through the 31st of July on Friday mornings and Friday afternoons here in Temecula. Also, there will be an intercession, which I happen to be teaching, starting the 27th of July, running through the 17th of August. And that's on the Great American Music Broadway musicals, Part Two. I'm teaching Part One right now here in City Hall. I'll leave some catalogs out here. Peg and I will deliver catalogs to all the senior centers, the libraries, anyplace else that we can find to deliver them, and I'll leave a few of these out here on the thing in the lobby for those that are here that would be interested in doing it. It's for 50 and older. However, we don't check ID cards to check your age. So if you want to start learning something, this is no test, no homework, just sitting in class and listening to some pretty good professors tell you what's happening. And it's quite interesting. So you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy. You know, as Mr. Moore takes his seat next to his lovely wife Peg, we have a lot of students here today, and if there are any of you who are fairly new to Temecula, Jimmy Moore was probably more responsible than anybody else for the city of Temecula becoming the city of Temecula back in 1989, organizing the Cityhood Committee, and his wife Peg, sitting next to him, was a member of our very first city council. So you always grace us with your presence, Mr. and Mrs. Moore. We're happy you're here. Thank you. And the final speaker, please.
The final speaker is Carl Nielsen.
Good evening, Mr. Nielsen.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here for just a quick couple minutes, and that is regarding Villa Dos Picos parking. If you're, I'm sure most of you, in fact, all of you, I'm sure, are familiar. It's the street that's right at Department of Motor Vehicles at the corner, all the way, one block, which is a dead end. Recently, I went there. I had some friends that I talked to. I was there on business and noticed that people were driving up and down the street, parking in doubly, yelling and screaming at each other, and ranting and raving about the parking. And I stopped, and I went to the Department of Motor Vehicles with all these people in their monumental line and asked them what was the problem. And the problem is, they can't find a place to park. So I took a petition down about a week later. I decided against going to the DMV line, because everybody's going to sign the thing, and they may go there once a year, I don't know, once every four years. But I went to the local businesses, every single business on that one-block area, both sides of the street, and I asked them if that was a problem. Ninety-nine percent said yes, and I recommended in my petition that the city establish no parking on that street from 6:00 PM in the evening to 6:00 AM in the morning. The reason I'm recommending that is because a few of the local businesses on that street, which are primarily involved in mechanic, mechanical issues, have been parking their customers' cars on the street, either awaiting time to be serviced or awaiting parts or whatever. And what's happened is, these people have been parking them there for a period of up to one month. Well, I talked to the local police officer, and he is familiar with the situation. He knows a couple of the people that are doing it. He has contacted them, and what they do is, they will go out and they will move their car, their customer's car, they allege, maybe a foot or two, so that they have been moved, and there's nothing he can do about it. I talked to him about my recommendation, and he thought it was a good idea and that I should come and make my recommendation to you people. The other thing is, not only are the businesses affected, and all the DMV patrons are affected, but most of the businesses say it's not a problem to them because they don't utilize overnight parking on that street, and they are aware of the people that are doing it. Code enforcement is aware of it. I talked to that individual. He has come out... Code enforcement is aware of it. I talked to that individual. He has come out, and he has enforced the parking on the business area of the street, because he's responsible for that entire area. And if you're familiar with that block, you'll know that they're all long businesses, maybe fifteen businesses on each building, on both sides. And they block, they put cars everywhere, and you can't even drive your car around the buildings, let alone put a fire truck around there.
Mr. Nielsen, I'll need for you to summarize, please.
That's my basic problem, and I'd just ask that it be considered for enforcement of no parking in the night, and make these people take the cars off the street, and maybe that'll stop this problem. Thank you.
I thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have Mr. Nielsen's contact information on his speaker slip?
We do.
We'll look into it, sir, and we'll have somebody get back to you and see what we can do. So thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, no further speakers? That's it? Okay. Then we'll move forward with council comments. Reports by members of the city council on matters not on the agenda will be made. At this time, a total not to exceed ten minutes is devoted to these reports. Any reports? I see nobody in the queue, so you're getting off easy tonight, guys. Did you have something, Matt?
Yeah.
Do you have a little button up there?
I thought I pushed it. Oh, my God. There it is.
I know you're in the Robert seat.
I am. It's just present.
It's always. Thank you. Mr. Ron?
Okay. I appreciate you indulging me for just a moment. I wanted to build on a little bit about what was talked about earlier with Rancho Water. I appreciate you folks coming out today and talking with us about the water issues. Myself and Mr. Garcia yesterday had the opportunity to attend a meeting in Los Angeles at University of Southern California, hosted by the Public Policy Institute of California, as well as the Schwarzenegger Institute. And the topic, not surprisingly, was drought and our water situation in California. I thought it was a very useful meeting for a number of reasons, partly because the caliber of folks who came out to speak included the state directors for water, the Governor Schwarzenegger himself, Susan Kennedy, and folks from NASA, JPL, and others, and a really distinguished group of panelists. At the end of the day, I think what I took away from that is, you know, not surprisingly, we are in an exceedingly difficult situation. And so what I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about is how we value water, but also what are the possible solutions moving forward, because we definitely need to get active and engage quickly here. You know, my numbers are a little bit different than yours. I apologize. I took it off your website this morning. But they're close enough, I think, for back-of-the-envelope calculations. And, you know, it's difficult when we talk about water costs, because we don't often equate things in terms of 100 cubic feet. What is 100 cubic feet? Well, that container that you see in the picture will hold 100 cubic feet of water, right? But as the average consumer or household, we don't really equate that. So when you start understanding this in terms of gallons, which is a metric I think we're all familiar with, you recognize that we're paying fractions of pennies per gallon of water, depending on what tier structure we're in, whether it's agricultural or residential rates. But again, the value of water is kind of a remarkable thing, because in the agricultural industry, we often associate a different metric. We use acre-feet of water, and that's basically a football field covered with a foot of water, right? Now, I don't expect, do residential users use an acre-foot of water a year? Two families. Okay, that's what I thought. And so, you know, so we don't often, you know, ourselves equate our use with an acre-foot of water. But the agricultural industry certainly does, right? And so we have all these different metrics out there, but, you know, what does it mean? You know, if we just talk about acre-feet of water, and we start, you know, redoing the calculations, we recognize that, you know, this is why the agricultural industry is struggling. In fact, there are parts of California, I understand now, that have exceeded $1,000 or $1,100 per acre-foot in some of the tier structures. And this is causing, you know, problems up and down the state. But, you know, think about this for a moment. Just, you know, we're all familiar with the 16-ounce bottle of water. Filling that up at home on your own tap will cost you, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but our calculations come out to about four one-hundredths of a penny to fill up your bottle of water, right? And yet, we're kind of used to paying roughly a dollar. So let's just assume, right now, average tier structure is $1,000 per acre-foot, two households, for a year, right? If you were to take that dollar per store-bought bottle of water and equate that same thing out to what an acre-foot of water would cost in equivalency, it's actually pretty startling. Equivalency, we're talking about an acre-foot of water costing over $2.6 million, right? And yet, we think nothing of going to the grocery store, the convenience store, and spending a dollar. And I'm not advocating for or against bottled water, but I'm just saying, the way we understand and value water is very confusing based on the metrics that we use, and it's also very confusing for the public to understand. So creating sort of a common language across, you know, our water industry, I think, is a very important first step, particularly for the public right now, being charged with such, I think, challenging future water scenarios and costs. Depending on how you calculate the numbers, cities use about 10% to 20% of water. Agriculture uses 40 to 80. The reason we have the range is, do we include the watersheds, the lakes, the rivers, the ecosystems of California in the calculation? If we do, then it's the lower number. If we don't, it's the higher number, right? So if we just look at human use of water in the state of California, 20% goes to cities, 80% goes to agriculture. That's a substantial difference. But recognize that 98% of our state's economy is driven by our cities. And so one of the things that concerns me quite a bit is the concept of impacts to development, impacts to new meters, and so forth, as we're moving into these more serious drought scenarios. We're coming out of, you know, the Great Recession. The economy is starting to move forward, and we're starting to advance. And development in our region is a big metric and a big, you know, important piece of us being able to move forward and recover from this. So, you know, while we all kind of wonder about, you know, the logic of building more houses in a drought scenario, you know, California, you know, this is nothing new. And I understand that the last century or so of California's history, we've had ten major droughts, right? So it's not a new thing. This is actually our legacy. We are a drought state. So what I'm proposing here, and I appreciate you folks being here tonight, is that we create a water summit sooner rather than later, for a couple of reasons. One, I would like to have the city of Temecula emerge as a leader regionally in water issues, because I think this issue is that important. It's time that we took the relationship that we have with water seriously, and make sure that our South County cities, Riverside, our university systems, our water districts, our utilities, our tribal partners, even Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, and others participate in this dialogue, so that all of the represented agencies and appropriate folks are at the table to have a very serious conversation about how to move forward effectively. The other thing I would like to see is that the discussion doesn't just focus on, you know, the stick. I mean, to get people to change their behavior, we have a stick or a carrot, right? It's the incentive programs, or it's, you know, the fines and penalties for doing the wrong thing. And I think there's a lot more to it than that. You know, we need to have a very serious conversation about the diversity of our water supplies, managing our water demand, expanding the concepts of water trading, enhancing storage. And then, I think, most difficult, too, is addressing the rates, codes, and regulations that we have, both locally and statewide. Bringing all these folks to the table to have a serious conversation, I think, is incredibly important right now. And we need to have some very important key considerations in this process. How do we protect our regional and local economies and economic growth? How do we protect tourism, our quality of life, and agriculture, right? These are all very important hallmarks of what makes Temecula and Southwest Riverside what it is today. And then let's talk about things like technology and planning solutions. Talk about solutions moving forward with new development versus redevelopment, and identify both long- and short-term solutions, so that we can solve the immediate problems very quickly and efficiently with what I would hope to see as the least amount of economic impact to our region. But ultimately, you know, let's think beyond this, because it seems like we only really have this conversation when there's an emergency and when there's a scenario like we're here today talking about. Now, I have to say, I've worked in the water industry, watershed management, planning, and so forth, for over a decade. And this was like the slowest-moving Titanic ever. I mean, I think we all saw this coming. And, you know, no disrespect to the folks who work in the water industry, because it's a very challenging job, locally, let alone statewide. But if we're able to start steering that ship now, and understanding that there are going to be future roadblocks in the way, hopefully, we'll be more prepared next time coming out. So what I'd really like to see is that we work together on addressing community education. You know, we just had a gentleman here. Thank you for talking about the OSHA programs with Cal State San Marcos. I've spoken with Cal State San Marcos this morning, and they're more than willing to step up to the plate and provide not just community-based education on, you know, proper techniques and so forth, but also training for businesses, organizations, and agencies as well, and to help facilitate that conversation. We need to discuss the barriers to progress, of course, the environmental concerns, and the water-energy nexus. I don't think a lot of people really have a good handle on how much electricity we use in the state of California just to move, process, and distribute our water supply. And then ultimately, at the end of the day, there's probably some economic benefits to all of this, you know? So I think it's important for us to move forward very rapidly now, to start this conversation, and hopefully gain, you know, some confidence among the community, identify a clear path forward, and create new partnerships, I think, that we don't have forged as well as we should have. So I appreciate your indulgence this evening, and with that, I'll end my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. It's nice to see that leadership on this issue, so I think as a city, we certainly appreciate it. Any other council comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item one, waive reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of April 14, 2015, and April 20, 2015, I'm sorry, and April 20, 2015, special meeting. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, authorize the mayor to send a letter or letters of support for a multi-year federal transportation bill that directs greater funding availability to local government. Item five, receive report regarding status of vacancy on Community Services Commission. And I might say there that is relevant to an item later on. At the end of the meeting tonight, it's possible that an action we'll be taking later will create an opening on the Community Services Commission. So this is in an effort to make sure that we know how to fill that. Item six, approve an agreement with Inland Empire Property Services for weed abatement services for fiscal year 2014-15. Item seven, approve a temporary construction easement on the city-owned parcel located at the corner of Rancho California Road and Diaz Road in connection with the Marietta Creek Flood Control, Environmental Restoration, and Recreation Project. Item eight, accept the improvements and file the notice of completion for the pavement rehabilitation program, Inez Road, Jedediah Smith Road, to Vallejo Avenue, and that's project number PW-12-12. Items nine and 10, we will be removing off calendar for consideration at a later date. Item 11, approve the purchase and installation agreement with Nature Works, Inc. for Sam Hicks Monument Park Playground Enhancement, PW-12-20. And that is it.
Move approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please cast your votes. That motion does carry unanimously 4-0. That will take us to the next portion of our meeting, which is the Temecula Community Services District Meeting, and President Mary Ann Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order, and let the record reflect that we have four members here, and one vacancy so far. Moving on to CSD public comments. Do we have any public comments? We do not. All right, then. Then let's move to the CSD consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 12, approve the action minutes of April 14, 2015. Item number 13, approve TCSD proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2015-16.
Madam President, just a point of order. On item 13, we had a discussion this morning at a meeting, and that's actually a misprint. It shouldn't be approved, TCSD proposed rates and charges. It should be setting the public hearing for TCSD rates and charges. And I believe that date is June 23rd.
That's correct.
June 23rd.
It is, and the resolution reflects that. So, all right, thank you. Then I have no questions, or anybody's pulling anything? All right, motion?
Second.
And a second? Mr. Ron, you have it, and please cast your votes. And the consent passes for to zero. Anything? Community Services report, directors, anything, nothing?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
I'm looking your way, Kevin. All right. Anything else? General manager, nothing?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
All right. Then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and Community Services stands adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, you might see if you're following on the agenda. We have three other bodies that meet at the Board, which is us, the Successor Agency, the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and Temecula Public Financing Authority. None of those agencies have an agenda tonight, so we won't be doing that. And we will now reconvene the city council meeting under City Council Business. Item 14, approve an interim ordinance prohibiting certain land uses and construction in the proposed Uptown Jefferson specific plan area, pending formal approval of the Uptown Jefferson specific plan. Mr. Watson, I see you up there. You have a staff report for us.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is an interim ordinance.
Luke, why don't you just wait a minute? We've got a lot of movement back. Let's give everybody a chance to leave.
I don't think it has anything to do with Luke.
I know. Is it me?
No. I know you guys have to be here till at least 8 o'clock, so it's 8:01, so I guess that's your cue, huh?
Wow, that's a big crowd tonight.
Killing me.
Really big.
It's a busy night for students. Give it another minute, Luke. Let's... Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight before you is the interim ordinance, temporarily prohibiting certain uses and construction in the proposed Uptown Jefferson specific plan area. The area itself is located just north of Old Town. It's 560 acres, a large portion of which is the Marietta Creek. You can see that it's bordered to the south by Rancho California Road, to the north by Cherry, to the east by Interstate 15, and the west, of course, by Marietta Creek. It's primarily suburban commercial development, and no existing residential or mixed use is developed in the area. It's our oldest commercial area. It was planned and developed mostly under the county before the city incorporated. The ordinance tonight before you is an interim ordinance, is proposed as an interim urgency zoning ordinance pursuant to the government code, and shall become effective immediately upon adoption. If adopted, the term of the moratorium would be initially 45 days. If the council wished to extend the moratorium, it would do so in a public hearing, and the date for termination would be a date set by the council or the adoption of the specific plan. The intent of the interim ordinance is to place a limited moratorium on establishment of certain uses and developments that are inconsistent with the proposed Jefferson specific plan. So the intent of the ordinance isn't to stop all development, just those specific uses and the specific construction of development that would be inconsistent with the future specific plan. So if a proposed development or use came in and applied, and it was permitted by right under the current municipal code zoning ordinance, and it would be permitted by right under the future specific plan, that project can move forward. If a project comes in and it requires a conditional usage permit, that project would be subject to the moratorium. to the moratorium. Like I said, it's a limited moratorium, so it would not apply to tenant improvements, which are internal to the development. Building repairs required to protect public health and safety, and repairs required by the building code. So why is the moratorium necessary? The moratorium is necessary because the city and the community have been engaged in a long-term, multi-year project to develop an SP, specific plan for the Jefferson area, and this has been going on since 2012. And just recently, the city has received applications that propose uses and development that would be inconsistent with the community's vision and the future specific plan. The vision I'm referring to was first began to be established in 2012. The city held six public workshops, public visioning workshops, to gather the community together and get their input on what they wanted to see the Jefferson area become in the future. The city used many avenues to connect with the community to get them to come out, including direct mailing directly to property owners and business owners, a dedicated project website, envisionjefferson.org, which is still in use, Facebook and Twitter campaigns, the city website, obviously, Channel 3, a large email list that we've put together over this process, and then, of course, our local clubs and organizations throughout the community. This effort was highly effective, as you can see by the pictures there, these meetings were highly attended by a large cross-section of the community, and in fact, the effort was so effective, the American Planning Association gave the city a Temecula award for outreach innovation. So that entire process culminated in the community developing eight overarching policy recommendations. The first is expand the mix of uses in the area to include residential, strengthen economic development, define the districts and neighborhoods, establish a distinct identity for the area, create updated and flexible development standards, integrate open space and trails, parks, improve mobility and connectivity, and build and maintain a modern infrastructure You can take all those eight policy recommendations and summarize them as the community's vision is to transform the Uptown Jefferson area into a more vibrant, urban, mixed-use environment that includes commercial as well as residential, and it's truly a place where people can live, work, and play. So since the development of those eight policy recommendations, staff brought those recommendations to all of the city commissions, the Community Services, Public Traffic Safety, and the Planning Commission. On August 12th, the staff took those recommendations to city council, and the city council directed staff, based on those eight policy recommendations, to move forward with drafting of a specific plan and the drafting of a environmental impact report. So after that direction, staff began putting together the major concepts of the plan, not writing the actual plan, but the major concepts, and in a very concerted effort to stay connected to the community throughout every step of the process, a steering committee made up of two commissioners from each city commission was established to hold public meetings to review the major concepts of the plan as we move forward and to receive feedback. Six meetings were held between July and December of 2013. There was considerable feedback during that time. We took that feedback and that framework, and in January of 2014, staff actually put pen to paper and began drafting the plan, which we have been doing for a little over 12 months now. To summarize the Uptown Jefferson specific plan public hearing process, as of today, 27 either public hearings or public meetings have been held in front of the city council, multiple meetings in front of all of the commissions, the Old Town Local Review Board, multiple steering committee meetings, a developer workshop, and there are still six more to be held before the adoption of the plan. This exhibit is the remaining adoption schedule, the remaining six meetings that we'll have. Like I mentioned, the draft SP is complete, and it will be released in early May. Then we will hold another steering committee meeting to get feedback from the public as well as the commissions, and then we will visit all of the commissions as well as the Old Town Local Review Board. We'll go to the Planning Commission, and based on their recommendation, if they recommend moving to the council, we'll go to the council and tentatively July 28th and move to adopt the plan and certify the EIR. So in conclusion, this has been a multi-year process, and it's coming to a close. The city has gone through a lengthy visioning process. It's worked at every step of the way in a collaborative effort to have the community drive the drafting of the specific plan. And as of today, the draft EIR is complete. It's out for public comment. The draft SP itself is complete. It's circulating with city departments right now, will be released in the first two weeks of May. And of course, the reason we're here is that the city has received some applications that would, you know, for development that is inconsistent with the specific plan, and staff's concern is that the establishment of uses and development that are inconsistent with the specific plan would be detrimental to the implementation of the community-defined vision for the Uptown Jefferson-specific plan. And because of that, the staff is recommending that an interim ordinance of the city of Temecula temporarily prohibiting certain uses and construction in the proposed Uptown Jefferson-specific plan area pending city council consideration of the proposed Uptown Jefferson-specific plan and finding the action exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines be adopted by the city council. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Luke. Any questions? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Luke, good evening to you, good presentation. Tell us a little bit about the applications that came in, and let's talk a little bit about timing and conditional uses versus non-permitted by right, et cetera. Can you go into that a little bit?
Specific ones, or?
Well, you're bringing forth the moratorium, as you said, because certain uses came in that were inconsistent with the plan. That's why the proposed moratorium's coming forward. What were those, and what were their timings? Well, I mean, when did they come in?
Okay.
Was the applicant informed? Can you go over that?
Sure, sure. There are two. One is an application for a car wash at the corner of Del Rio and Jefferson, and the other is a parking lot that is much further up, closer to Cherry Avenue, next to the freeway. The timing on both of those is that I believe the application, at least the pre-app for the car wash, came in a couple months ago, and the actual official application, I believe, came in April 8th. So that's the timing on that one. I'm not sure on the parking lot, but it's very similar. It's very close to that timing.
Let's... Is the parking lot permitted by right or conditional?
It's conditional.
It's conditional, and the car wash is conditional?
Right.
As well. And we haven't received an official application for the parking lot yet, or have we?
I believe we have, yeah.
We have, but you're not certain when it came in. Maybe, Armando, you can address that in a second, but while you're thinking about that. But the one for the car wash came in April 8th, you said?
I believe so, yes.
And the pre-app, do you know when the pre-app came in?
I can actually pull that up right now.
Okay. And where I'm going, what I'm trying to, my next question as you're looking that up is I want to know, did we communicate this at the pre-app stage and at the application stage to the person making the application, that they'd be inconsistent with the future plan, and what was the response of the applicant?
City staff was discussing the moratorium over a few weeks, and it wasn't determined whether we were going to move forward with the moratorium over that time period. And as soon as staff decided, city manager decided to move forward, the applicant was notified immediately. And once the applicant was notified immediately, they understood and they responded with some correspondence back to the city.
Get a little more specific, and maybe Armando can answer this, if you have this. A person puts in a pre-application, and the purpose of the pre-application is to get an understanding of what it's going to take, and he wants to find out from you, us, the city, what we require, and we tell them. So obviously, we must have responded to that pre-application, and our response to the pre-application, did we tell them that they're not consistent with the future plan? In other words, did we notify them at that point that there may be a problem? Or did we give them positive feedback to bring in an application? And then henceforth, they brought in an application?
Right.
And so I'm trying to make this a connection of our communication.
Right.
Which, by the way, 27 meetings is compelling, okay? So, you know, but I just want to gather all this information right now, so...
Sure. I can go all the way back even further than that.
Okay.
At our first meeting that we had with the applicant and his representatives, he proposed, told us what he wanted to do. This was just an informal meeting, it wasn't an application.
And when was that, Luke?
That was in October, October 23rd of last year.
Got it.
And we listened, and we told him, you know, under the current zoning code, this is what you would have to do, but we also explained, you know, we're engaged in a long-term plan process here. We plan on, you know, we plan on adopting this plan at some point in the future. You know, under that plan, it doesn't look as drafted now that this would be allowed. Didn't say you couldn't do it, we just said that's the situation that we have. So it was laid out, and the applicant knew when they came in. They've done some homework, they understood. They've been to the website, envisionjefferson.org. They understood that this was the process that we were engaged in.
Let me ask you a question, and did the applicant understand the difference between a conditional use and a permitted-by-right use? Was that explained to him, and do you feel that they had that understanding?
That was explained to him, and I believe he understood that. I believe he understood that before we explained it.
Please continue if there's more.
Right, and then, and I just looked at the timeline here. They came in with a pre-app, I believe, in December.
Right.
And then they...
Of 2014.
Of 2014, with full understanding of what was happening, and then came back with a full application in April.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Luke, I have one or two. When you talked earlier about noticing, and one of the ways we noticed was the traditional method of noticing, would that have gone to all the property owners in the corridor?
Yes.
Property owners. Would it also have gone to the existing businesses?
Yes, both.
I want to get back to that specific application in a minute, but a more general question, the way the specific plan is being formulated and what presumably is going through the system and will be discussed, banded around, but the presumption is at some point it will be approved. Who knows, but that's the presumption. What will that do to property values in the Jefferson corridor? Will it hurt them or help them?
I would say it would help them, and help them considerably. It may not help them right away, but it will in the long run help them. The amount and intensity of development that is currently allowed and the amount and intensity that will be allowed under the specific plan are very different. Under the new plan, they will be allowed considerably more. So we don't have a maximum FAR under the new plan. Now there's a maximum floor area ratio, which is the amount of space that can be put onto a specific site. Under the new plan, there is no maximum. It's basically driven by the development standards. So they have a site, they have development standards they have to meet, they have a certain height, a certain floors that they can go, that's maximum, whatever they can fit in that envelope, that building envelope, they can do it. The restrictions now are much lower, so the revenue generating potential under the new plan is much higher.
Okay, thank you. And last question, this pertains specifically to the car wash application that we're talking about, and Peter, this may be something that you want to weigh in on as well. Just from my own experience in the development industry, there are times that come up where we know what the policies are in a specific jurisdiction, we know what they're likely to be as time goes on, and we make an informed decision as developers as to whether or not we want to continue with an application, knowing that we are at risk because things may happen that are contrary to what we'd like to see happen, but we make the decision to put forth the application regardless, hoping that we can work through whatever issues may be. Is this one of those cases where legally the developer is going forward at risk, or because he submitted the application to us before the approval of the specific plan, does he have a right?
Legally, I do not believe he has any right to continue with this if you adopt the moratorium. And practically, as Luke has outlined, the outline of the specific plan was well-known for quite a period of time. So both legally and practically and planning-wise, the developer has taken every action at their own risk at this point.
Okay, and just one last question. We understand that this is an interim ordinance to be effective for 45 days. By your table, the SP is not scheduled to be approved, if it's going to be approved, until late July. So presumably, to offer the protections that we're looking for with this, we would have to extend that beyond 45 days, and I understand there's a process in place by which we can do that, and extend it up to a full year, but it has to be at a full public hearing, a regular notice meeting to extend. So if we should institute this tonight, there is another opportunity for anyone who comes and wants to address the issue in a full-blown public hearing. They have the right to do that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, if I could expand on that a bit, too. One of the concepts that I had discussed with the staff early on was that the council has not yet looked at the specific plan. So as you get a briefing before the council here at a public meeting, or as you start your planning hearings on that, you can make adjustments to the moratorium, or you can make adjustments to the specific plan. So at this point in time, while a lot of work has gone into the Uptown Jefferson-specific plan, it's really just coming before the council in a very formal way. So you're just beginning your process, and you have a lot of opportunities to adjust the plan or to adjust the moratorium.
Okay, Mr. Nigard, do you have a further question?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick follow-up. Luke, on the car wash property, what do we have it proposed in the specific plan?
It's part of the Creekside Village commercial overlay. It will be allowed to have mixed use, residential, office, retail, a number of other things. It's 97 feet, five stories.
Do we, are you using a DU per acre number or a floor area ratio number as far as intensity of development?
There is no maximum, so it's whatever they can fit and meet all of the development standards that are in the specific plan, which are intended to create a form that addresses the street properly, and whatever they can fit on their site, how many units or how many few units they want to do, they're allowed to do that.
And again, as the city attorney opined, we haven't looked at the specific plan, so a little, unless you're on the subcommittee, a little bit of a disadvantage, but are we doing, are we reducing parking requirements? Are we doing public parking lots? Will he be required to do parking on this property?
He will be required to do public parking, or private parking.
And then the same set of questions for the parking lot. What, under the SP, what is it?
Conditionally permitted.
Pardon me?
Conditionally permitted.
No, in the SP, what is it proposed to be as far as land use? The parking lot?
As far as land use?
You know, I confuse you. There were two applications. I switched gears on you real fast. Yeah. Let's go back to the applications. We covered the car wash, then we have a, you mentioned a parking lot application, right? That parking lot application, what is its proposed land use under the SP that's coming our way?
It will be in the Uptown Sports District.
Right.
And in the Uptown Sports District, it's five stories, 97 feet, mixed use residential, commercial, retail.
And so almost the same thing?
Almost the same thing.
And I don't want to dive too much into the SP, but what's the difference between the two? Because the definition you just gave me seems the same. Sports versus Creekside?
Right, so it's a little bit different because it's the specific plan, and one of the recommendations from the community was to define districts and neighborhoods.
Okay.
Which is a little different than the way we usually zone. It's usually a community commercial, you know, highway tourist. These are trying to build on any and all of the existing character in those areas, and that's what we tried to build on. So that's why they're called Uptown Sports, because it's going to be next to the, hopefully the future flood basin there, which will be a sports park.
Okay.
And Creekside Village is next to the creek, and it's supposed to be...
Got it.
Majority residential, so it's a village.
Got it. Thank you.
I know that Dr. Ron's question, but if you'll indulge me for a moment, I was on the subcommittee on the specific plan along with now-retired council member Ron Roberts, so I have been involved and have seen it, and I know we did, Armando, looking at you, I know we did a lot of renderings as part of that. I don't recall exactly what properties we did some renderings on, but did we do what this particular, looking at the car wash property?
What we've done is we try to model some of the parcels, you know, keep in mind, this is a redevelopment project, so the very nature of it is if we allow the same thing, then we wouldn't see any redevelopment. So what we try to do is we try to model the parcel so that we can achieve the most. It's a... It's, it's a form-based type of development, so I think we modeled this specific site. Do you have, you have that?
We did.
If you can show the public?
Yeah, if we have something, it would be helpful.
This is just a, a concept done by our architect. So this right here would be Diaz Road, this would be Del Rio, and the creek would be here.
Jefferson?
I mean Jefferson, excuse me.
So is, is that showing, then, if, if they were going to put a different use on that same property? This is the type of use that would be acceptable, they certainly don't have to build this, but-
Yes, conceptually.
Okay, so when we talk about it being substantially more intense, clearly it is.
Substantially more intense.
Okay, Dr. On?
Just curious, so you've, you mentioned there were 27 public meetings to date, and then six additional meetings. So we're just moving into the process now to complete the specific plan, go through the public review, and continue that sort of comment on the environmental and sequoia documents and so forth, correct?
Right.
And so those, those next six meetings will constitute what, then?
Well, the next few meetings, the steering committee and the commission meetings, those will be update and receiving of comments from the commissions, as well as the community. And based on those comments, we'll incorporate them into the plan. And then only, and then and only then, will we move to the planning commission, because the planning commission will then make a recommendation, one way or another, we hope, to approve, to move to the council for ultimate certification.
So then, so I guess that's what I was trying to get at, is then, so everything is still in a very draft phase right now, there's additional opportunity for comment. So by no means is this an individual's last bite at the apple, so to speak, right? So, so us placing the ordinance this, this evening is, is more than of, of an attempt to allow this process to play out as it has since roughly 2012?
Yes.
Okay, and then, I was, I was hoping the city attorney might be able to opine just for a moment, and not to put you on the spot, Peter, but just on, for a moment on the, on the concept here, because we're in such a draft phase, and sort of early on in, in this process, the concept of this ordinance versus a regulatory taking?
There's no regulatory taking here. This is a moratorium ordinance, there's a specific section of the government code that permits it. This is the classic use of the moratorium ordinance. Normally, you would see a moratorium ordinance at the beginning of the study process. So in a lot of cities, you would have seen this ordinance coming to the council a year and a half, maybe two years ago. Instead, it's coming at the end of the study session, where you have a much more defined potential, specific plan that people can, can look at. The, the regulatory takings require the removal of all economic use before there can be any damages. You know, if anybody contends that's the case under this moratorium, there is a specific fail-safe mechanism in there, where they can make a specific application to the, to city to argue that. So if they do believe that, which I don't think is the case, but they're more than welcome to, to argue that. So I think we're in good shape in terms of the, the regulatory takings issue.
Thank you.
And I also want to emphasize to you, just as you said, we are at the, or the council is at the beginning of the process to approve this, not the end. So there will be several more public hearings and opportunities to either address the issues on the specific plan, or any further exceptions to the moratorium that you may wish to make.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Edwards?
Well, that's exactly what I was going to ask. I was going to ask, is, would this be precedent-setting? And obviously, Peter, you've said no, because there are provisions for it in, in the law. So you answered my question, it's not precedent-setting. But it is interesting that normally, this would take place, you know, way back at the very beginning. So that was, that was my question, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff?
One last question, because the, the public would, would ask, it's kind of the obvious question, is, is, let me see, I want to frame the question correctly. Guy wants to build a car wash on his piece of property, city thinks, just by putting together staff, that it should be something else. Why? Why, why not a car wash? I, maybe, you may not be the one to answer this, maybe it's a subcommittee question.
Well, I would say, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll be happy to as well.
Yeah, it's not a trick question, I, I mean, here we are saying, no to the car wash, let's put a moratorium, and, and among other things. In lieu of this, what's our, what's our thinking behind that? We're obviously thinking that the mixed-use, high-rise residential is better for some reason than a car wash.
Can I clarify that question? I mean, not to speak for you, but just to clarify, it's, we're not, we're not saying, I guess the interpretation, and from my perspective, it's, you know, let us get through the remainder of the process, right?
You know, I like that. No, I, I like that. I'll withdraw that question, that answers my question, thank you.
Oh, I didn't mean, sorry.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
No, that's-
That's exactly how I'm thinking about it.
If I could add to that, too, I mean, Councilmember Ron is exactly correct, we're in the middle of a process before the city council. So the question is, do you preclude any use at this time that may interfere with what may be adopted at a later date? So you're really just putting new development on hold for the short while in this case, four, maybe five months, until the council completes that process.
Got it.
Because if you weren't to do a moratorium, and it was built, and it was inconsistent with the specific plan, it would be, it would be there until something happened, and who knows when that would be.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Luke. I know we have several speakers on this issue, so let's go ahead and call the first speaker.
We do, Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Ellen Berkowitz, to be followed by Wayne Nile.
Good evening, Ms. Berkowitz.
Good evening, thank you. And we do have a little order of speakers, so I am first, and Mr. Nile is next, and hopefully we can keep to our order. I also have some-
That's fine, if I could just say, because sometimes we've had people in that circumstance ask to give their time to someone else, we don't do that, okay.
We all want to speak, none of us are giving our time away.
All welcome to speak.
I do have some handouts here, I don't know who, take them, thanks. So as, I'm sure you surmised, we are the car wash, and we do like the question, why not a car wash? We think it's a fabulous project, and I want to tell you a little bit of the history of kind of what we're doing here. I am Ellen Berkowitz, I'm with the law firm of-
To interrupt you, but I want to make sure you have the time you're entitled to, we need five minutes, and we run three, so we'll just, we don't want to shortchange you.
Okay.
So she'll fix that, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Ellen Berkowitz, of the law firm of Gresham Savage, I represent Wayne Nile, who you'll hear from in just a minute. And as you know from the discussion, we have been working with the city on this project since last fall. We have plans for a state-of-the-art automated express car wash at that corner of Jefferson and Del Rio. It's a site that's currently vacant, it was used for decades as a gas station. And when we met with the city over all these many months, we were aware of the specific plan discussion, but we had discussions with the city that because the specific plan was still in draft form, because it was undergoing review, because the provisions of the specific plan were not yet finalized, that our project would be evaluated in accordance with the existing community commercial zoning. And based on those assurances, we filed a formal application for the project earlier this month. We even have hearings coming up, not hearings, I'm sorry, meetings next week to further discuss the project. If tonight's moratorium is passed, obviously, the project would be, in essence, dead, unless the city decided to add car washes to the specific plan. But why we think this is, this is a great project, and we don't want to be stopped dead in our tracks, why we really would like to continue, is it's a great project. My client's here tonight, he's going to tell you more about the project itself. The architecture is fantastic, I think you can see from some of those drawings. Our architect is here tonight, and he'll also tell you a little bit more about the style and the landscaping, and the features that we've incorporated in communication, I should say, with the drafters of the specific plan, to make sure that we had a project that was visually consistent, and keeping with the vision in the specific plan. So we think that the project, it's very beautiful, it will jump-start development in this very underdeveloped area of Jefferson, and encourage further investment in quality projects like this in the specific plan area. We also think the city would, of course, be very well-served by having a project like this, a state-of-the-art, water-efficient car wash. This is especially important in this time of drought. You heard from the Rancho California Water District about its water reduction strategies. How are these reductions going to be achieved? One way that a lot of California cities are now requiring is to demand that residents wash their cars in a commercial car wash facility, and not wash them at home. So for all these reasons, we are asking that the city council permit our project to proceed, notwithstanding the moratorium. And, you know, one of the things I wanted to mention, we talked about conditional use permit, whether the project was allowed by right. The current community commercial zoning actually allows automated car washes by right at this location, if the car washes are accompanied with a gas station. So even though our project proposes an automated car wash, we were actually asked to nevertheless apply for a conditional use permit, something that's only required for full-service car washes, which this car wash is not. It is a car wash without a gas station, I think it's, a gas station is something that nobody really wants to see here, but as an automated car wash, it would be allowed by right under the community commercial zoning that's currently in place. So you're going to hear from a number of speakers, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we really do respectfully request that you find that the project can be allowed to continue through the process. We've spent a lot of time and investment and work with the city, and we're very much looking forward to being able to offer a state-of-the-art facility that we think would enhance the community. So that's my comments, I have other speakers from our group, please.
Thank you, Ms. Berkowitz.
Yeah, go ahead. So if my staff could clarify, if they put in one gas pump, they're home free, they're permitted by right?
Let me answer that, yeah. Under the, the current underlying zoning, if you have a gas station, then the car wash is a secondary accessory type of use, so that would be allowed by right. But when you have a, just a car wash by itself, that element requires a CUP under the current zoning, and that's what they're-
Armando, is our, is our code, does it designate a, a certain square footage as an accessory use for the car wash? In other words, i- i- if it's an accessory use, it's, it's, it's a minor use? Does it designate that, or is it vague on the topic?
It doesn't really say that, it's, it basically, it addresses a gas dish as being a primary component of that, and then the car wash is a secondary aspect of that business, which is in most cases, if you go to a gas station with a car wash, it is a, a secondary element of that.
Okay, and then, one question for the speaker, that, that saved me the time of having to ask every speaker, and you can address it as you all will or desire, but knowing that it was a conditionally permitted use, is it reasonable to say that you knew the risk, that, that, that even, notwithstanding the specific plan, that your conditionally permitted use may not be approved? But you still went forward?
Absolutely, we knew that risk, and I think, not to sound overly confident, but we really think it is a great project, it's something that would enhance the area. We knew, obviously, when you go for a conditional use permit, you're not guaranteed to get it, but we wanted the opportunity to be able to present that, to have a hearing on that, to have our project, you know, fully considered. And we do believe that if, if it is allowed to be considered even as a conditional use, that it is something that the city would decide that it wants. So yes, we understand that.
Thank you. Dr. On, do you have a question, speaker?
Just, just a quick one, Ms. Berkowitz, you, you mentioned that there were specific assurances to allow for review that were provided by staff. Can you, because we heard just a moment ago that they sort of made it abundantly clear that this was, you know, moving through the process, the specific plan, and then it was a conditional use, and that, you know, we, the process as they laid out, and you're saying something very different, so can you-
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, no, go ahead, I'm just, I just kind of curious, because those are two very different comments.
So I would say, it's actually all of the above. We knew there was a specific plan, we knew that it was moving through. When we started talking to the city, it, it wasn't moving through, you know, at a rapid clip, we didn't know that it was going to be forthcoming in, you know, a month, or two, or three, or we might have kind of had second thoughts. But we were told that, no, you've come in today, there is no specific plan yet, the specific plan is still going through a process, we don't know exactly when the specific plan will be drafted, we don't know exactly what the specific plan will say. Right now, you have community commercial zoning, that is what, you know, we'll consider your project under.
Okay, but, but you referenced specific assurances, though. So what, what were those that the city provided?
The assurances were that we would be considered under the community commercial zoning, if we applied under the community commercial zoning. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not sort of saying that in, in the terms of trying to set the city up for a lawsuit, if that's what you're-
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, because it's, when you mentioned it earlier, it sounded like staff had basically said, if you submit this, we will guarantee and provide you specific assurances, guarantee that there will be review.
Right.
But now, but you're saying something slightly different now, that you were aware of the process.
Yeah, so they were saying, if you submit today, we have community commercial zoning today, you fall under community commercial zoning, we'll consider you under that, we have a specific plan, that's later, that's in the future. But yes, right now, that you would be allowed under a conditional use permit. If you apply today, you will be considered under that zoning, you know, with a, a conditional use permit was what they had requested that we apply for. And so we applied for it, based on the fact that that was the zoning in place, and that is what would kind of drive the project, it would be considered under that rubric.
Okay, but again, getting to my point, is that there were no specific assurances, that we wouldn't be here today, having this conversation, is what I'm getting at.
Well, I think, I think had, you know, I, I think, we're sort of, we're, you know, smart, savvy business people, had we been told, hey, you know what, you guys, this is not a good idea, there's going to be a specific plan, it's coming down really fast, a car wash won't be allowed, you're wasting your time, we would have had some different thoughts. But as it was, I think the idea was, you have zoning that's currently in place, you'll be considered under that zoning that's in place. Does that make any sense?
Right, so, it, it does, and I'm, I'm hoping the city attorney can weigh in here really quickly, because I understand that the staff wouldn't technically be allowed to say what you just said. Can you sort of opine on that for just a moment? You know, to basically tell a, a, a potential applicant that, you know, you know, based on our best judgment, this absolutely would be, you know, dead in the water.
You know, if I could, I want to hear what you have to say, too, but I think also, we have to keep in mind that it's not staff's role to tell any applicant that they can't or shouldn't submit. I mean, every applicant is entitled to submit-
And we understand that, too.
No matter what, the, the circumstances, so.
That's a very good point, that's what I was going to make, too. The staff tries its best to be honest with the applicant, letting them know where they are, it was early in the process, and as this developed, clearly, the specific plan took more shape, and there were more concerns that were expressed about potentially inconsistent uses. I think a couple of you have raised a point, that's really the council's decision, too, and that's why we're here tonight, for you to make a decision as to what types of things should be stopped before the specific plan is approved, and what may be allowed to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berkowitz. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Wayne Nile, to be followed by John Reeves.
Good evening, Mr. Nile.
Good evening, how are you all? And thank you all for spending, allowing me to come up here and talk to you. I am the owner of Buzz's Three Minute Car Wash, and I generally was familiar with the specific plan, well, more than generally, I was, was quite familiar with it, and I was pleased enough with the entire concept, that when we talked early on, and after having met with some folks, to engage the MIG group, which you folks also engaged, and they kind of worked with us through this entire process. And I, I think the, the, the biggest issue is that I welcome that specific plan, and on an economic basis, as well as a, as a, the, 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 the physical beauty of it. A car wash at its absolute best, on a one-acre piece of property, is never going to be worth what a five- or six-story mixed-use residential building is. So at such time, if we were allowed to go ahead, at, at such time as it became economically feasible through other development, I would be willing to commit to this committee, or this council in writing, that I will make that change with the use of the property as quickly as I, as I possibly could. But there's a bigger issue at hand, and it, it's a combination of time and water. The time to do this plan, if it was approved on an absolute fast-track basis, by every estimate I've talked to with every real estate developer, it's many years away. And the many years are years that are needed to, to acquire property, to, to develop the specific sites, to implement them, and in the meantime- And in the meantime, the property is not particularly attractive. It's at the absolute beginning of the specific plan area, and, and I, my, the people that are going to follow me are going to show you some pictures of what we decided to do visually with the site, but I'd like to focus more on the water usage. If you wash your car at home, you use between 150 to 200 gallons of water. If you wash your car in an old-style commercial car wash, you use between 80 and 100 gallons of fresh water. Buzz's Three Minute Car Wash targets 15 gallons of fresh water per car. We would estimate that that wash should do somewhere in the neighborhood of 200,000 or 300,000 cars a year. Not, not many more than that, that sounds like a lot, but when you think about it being open eight to 10 hours a day, seven days a week, it's not really too many cars. But just multiplying that, as opposed to the alternatives, I hope is compelling enough to do it, to, to consider allowing us to go ahead. And, and also, I'd like to mention that, that the, the, every piece of responsible engineering was mandated to be put in. We're putting solar panels above the, 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 the canvas awnings, we're, we're putting state-of-the-art reverse osmosis systems in, state-of-the-art trash systems in, and in every case, it's with an eye towards both making a great-looking project, and, and a socially conscious project, and one that's consistent. So I am not a man of lots of words, but I'll answer any questions you have, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today.
Thank you, sir. Any...
Yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is John Reeves, to be followed by Janice Arndson.
Good evening, Ms. Reeves.
Good evening, council. Very much appreciate your time. I'm John Reeves. I'm lawyer for Agrocare Properties. They own the property at 28111 Jefferson at Del Dios. It's the site of car wash. It's had quite a history. For 20 years, there was a contamination problem. I got involved with the Caldwell's and the McMillan's, names you may well know from around town, in about 2001, and they said, we've got one last tenant, and he's got no way to pay for it. The site's had a leaking tank since 1994, and the water board's just issued a cleanup and abatement order. Help! So I've been involved, seeing them, shepherding them through this process for 14 years. And do you know what? After close to $1.5 million, that damn place is clean. And the cleanup, the closure letter was finally granted by the water board last year. I can tell you, I don't think it's a breach of client, attorney-client privilege, they wanted to sell this property for a long time, but they also knew, who's going to buy it from us with this ongoing obligation of ours? So they finally got it completed last year and put it on the market. What a perfect match with a car wash to go after a completed cleanup of an old gas station. And what better arrangement to have a car wash than a gas station and car wash? After the experience, the Caldwell's, the McMillan's, and Agrocare Properties, which are the three Caldwell siblings, after their experience with a gas station, trust me, a car wash is a better way to go. So after 14 years of literally being handcuffed, we ask you not to handcuff them again. We have a deal in escrow since December. Buzz is a great guy with a great plan, and you're going to see some vision that really fits in and jumpstarts the vision that's emerging with the specific plan. And I can tell you, I don't even yet think it's a specific, specific plan. It's still a draft plan. And when I wrote my letter to you all last week, there were 35 designated uses, and in the agenda that came out Friday evening, there were 50. So it's a moving target, so who knows what we're asked to have consistency with. But to have something that looks as beautiful as the car wash, that serves the beneficial water recycling and minimal water use purpose, and which finally puts a property that's been, when I say the handcuffs on the clients, the property's been handcuffed. You've seen it. It had a, a fence around it, and some remnants of a cashier's shack or something like that from an old gas station. That part's been cleared off, but there's still some sort of plastic wrap around it in order to keep things from blowing in and blowing out. It's an eyesore, and we can finally do something with it. And so this is the time to do it. The escrow is conditioned upon this, this body approving the car wash. We've already given Buzz about a month or two extension in order to allow him to go through the process, a process which frankly, he should be through. With the existing commercial zoning, he should have already been allowed for this project to go through. It shouldn't be subject to a CUP. But he went along with it. We shouldn't even be here. So we would request, one, that no moratorium be imposed, two, that if one is imposed, that this property, this project not be subject to it. Instead of putting roadblocks into something that could actually start to create that emerging sense of a really beautiful image with a specific plan for the uptown corridor, you don't want to stop this one dead in the tracks. This is what helps get it started. And this may be the baby project that has the appeal, that draws others to it. So let's get this thing started right now. There's just no benefit to holding back. So thank you very much for your time, and can I answer any questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Janice Arndson, to be followed by Gregory Hahn.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Janice Arndson, and I'm one of three siblings that is the owner of the Jefferson project there. And when we talk about vision and Jefferson, I understand vision, because my dad came here in the early '60s, fell in love with the Temecula Valley, and put his imprint, had the company that he worked for buy the Veil Ranch, Maco Corporation. At that time, he envisioned an agricultural preserve, and that Rancho California Road would be, you know, citrus, and ultimately, we, he bought 55 acres on the corner of Anza and California Road. So I have a real emotional attachment to Temecula, and my dad was the first president of the Rancho California Water District. He was president of the Packing House and Eagle Scout, and loved this area. And now our imprint has been completely different. We have this ugly piece of property, 14 years, you know, in doing the reparations. It's been a struggle for our family, but we put on the white hat, did the cleanup and remediation that we needed to do, and now we finally got clearance. And so I've looked at the project, and when I think of my dad and his love for the colonial Spanish era, this just has the same imprint and beautiful architecture of the building that we're in now. And I can't imagine anything that makes more sense for this community, and to be civic-minded, than to look at taking care of the water, and also benefiting all the residents of this community. So that's my final appeal. We would love to do something other than be an ugly eyesore on that corner of Jefferson and Del Rio. I'm sorry if I'm nervous.
It's okay, you're doing fine. Thank you, Ms. Arndson.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Gregory Hahn, to be followed by Kimberly Boone.
Good evening, Mr. Hahn.
Good evening, this is City Council, Mayor, staff. Greg Hahn, architect, Empire Design Group. I've been very fortunate to be involved in this project. It kind of came to me through a broker, but my firm and myself, I've been in the petroleum business since 1988, so I'm kind of somewhat of an expert by now. I've done probably 50 ground-up car washes and over 100 service stations. Most of the ARCO AM PMs in this town I've done, in Murrieta, so... This project, getting back to how it got started, is we did go to pre-Apps, we did attend these meetings, and we were told that we'd be falling under the existing zoning. So gung-ho, we were. We have a good client who wanted to do something very special for the city, so we, I'm sure you've noticed, the architecture is kind of reminiscent of where we're standing right now. So we've fashioned this site, and I think it works real well, because the majority of the intensity of the site is hidden from public view, which is usually what staff requires when we do a car wash. So we've done quite a bit of planning on that, and come up with quite what I think is a substantially smooth-flowing car wash that, that takes care of all the aesthetics, and it does create a focal point on Jefferson, as you head north on Jefferson, this beacon of a structure, the tower of the structure, the architecture of the site, will be the guiding light to the new specific plan that we all envision. I did attend probably at least three of the, the little workshops that they had, and was very enthralled with the concept that the city of Temecula was bringing forward. So this project is kind of following that path of pedestrian orientation, setback a little bit further out the road, a little bit wider sidewalks, more street trees, and building toward the aesthetics that would lead to further development, which I've heard mentioned several times. So it's unfortunate, we had a, a 3D fly, and you, I did email it to each of you, I don't know if you had a chance to open it up, because you had to actually download it, but if you did, you could see that we actually did a complete fly-around to the site, and I was going to show that tonight, but unfortunately, we were not able to. So what, you were able to get that little packet. So if you have any questions, this would be a good time to ask me.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn, Mr. Nagar.
Thank you. I might have asked this question of Mr. Buzz, but I can ask you, Mr., I know your name's not Mr. Buzz, but it's Buzz's Car Wash. I had a little levity here, but, Mr. Hahn, if, if the car wash was to get its conditional use permit, when is it foreseen that it would break ground? And you may not be able to answer that, but the proprietor...
It could break ground in the fall.
Fall?
I was...
So is construction a certainty?
Excuse me?
Is construction a certainty? And I'm, I'm asking a broad question.
Oh, yes. Yes, the client, this, this is, I, I have...
Financing in place?
I've had many clients, yes. He's, he's, he's a rock-solid client, he's been, he's been one of my best clients that I've had, and, you know, coming out of this recession, you know, I used to be the chairman of the Planning Commission in Murrieta, and my office is in historic downtown Murrieta, and I've lived here 27 years, so I've seen a lot of stuff, and obviously, you guys know who I am, but I've suffered very...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, can I, can I inquire of the, of Mr. Buzz, real quick?
Please.
Thank you. If, if, sir, if you don't mind coming back up, Mr. Hahn, I just wanted to get a direct answer, and I can get it real, real quick. And forgive me, sir, I'm calling you Mr. Buzz, but what was your name again?
That's fine, I've been called so much worse than that.
You, you and we both, so...
What, um, your first name again, like?
My first name's Wayne, but Buzz is what everybody but my mother refers to.
Okay, so I wasn't off the, too off the mark. Financing in place, you get your permit, you're ready to break ground, is that...
Absolutely. We're, we're totally funded, and we probably won't have any financing, there, there, there's no financing contingency in anything.
Got it, thank you, sir.
Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Kimberly Boone, to be followed by Neil Cleveland.
Ms. Boone, good evening.
Good evening. I'm, I'm uncertain, but I believe the lot that has been referred to tonight is owned by one of my clients. I'm representing them tonight, as they couldn't be here. I'm heading up their design team for a parking lot. They own the parking lot, or a vacant lot, it's undeveloped, on the corner of Madison and Sanborn. They also own the two buildings just to the east of that along the freeway, which is now called Madison Plaza. One of their major tenants in their, in that project is San Joaquin Valley College. There is a conditional use permit that indicates if San Joaquin Valley College wants to expand, which they do, they require more parking. So at, at that time, when we, we received that conditional use permit, my client purchased the lot across the street just for that purpose. We did our homework at that time. It is conditionally allowed, or permitted. Contrary to what Luke was saying tonight, my understanding from talking with the planning staff is that a parking lot will continue to be conditionally approved, unlike the, the car wash, which may not be included in the specific plan. So what we're requesting is to not have a delay, and, and allow us to submit our project. We went through a pre-App on February 26th. We had, we had positive feedback. There was no discussion whatsoever about this plan, so we were not informed. This is my first time hearing about it. My client heard a little bit about it, I think they got mailers and flyers and that kind of thing, but again, they were told that the parking would be conditionally allowed. So we, we have not submitted a formal application. We were notified, let's see, on 4/15, as a courtesy, because I was already at the Building Department for another matter, planning said, just want to give you a heads-up, this may be coming up. So on 4/17, I met with the planning director, and we discussed it, and I said, I need more time to submit. What I was being told by the planning staff was, get your application in by the 28th. A formal application includes so much work, civil plans, surveys, soils testing, landscape plans, photometrics, it's, it's at least a month's worth of work. So I immediately went to work, and we mobilized a team. We have contracts signed, we're working on soils testing right now, I've got the title company engaged, everybody's engaged, but we need more time. So what we were requesting was, could we have 30 days to submit our formal application, since this project is conditionally allowed, presumably under the new plan? Our, our biggest concern here is that San Joaquin Valley College would then not be able to expand, which is then saying to my client, you're losing revenue, you might lose this tenant, because they're renewing their lease, they may go elsewhere. So we're, we're hoping to just move forward with it. It could take up, technically, it could take up to a year, you know, with delays and, and that kind of thing, so we'd like to go ahead and move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Nagar, do you have a question?
She answered it for me, thank you.
Okay, good. What's the size of that parcel?
It's, it's just three acres.
Mm-hmm. And are you proposing surface parking or structure?
It's just surface parking.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
Approximately 80 spaces.
Thank you very much. Matt?
Just a quick, quick question. I keep, I'm, I'm getting a lot of, I think, mixed messages relating to sort of overtures by the staff, or I think discussions between the staff and, and the applicants throughout the last several months. And you mentioned, parking would be conditionally allowed, and that that overture was made to you, and yet, I'm also hearing folks saying that, you know, and let me sort of paraphrase this a bit, but, but that there was also, because of the status of the specific plan, there was also a contingency in place that let you know, you know, sort of buyer beware, or proceed at your own risk. And, and so I'm trying to sort of savvy those two philosophies here, because I'm hearing both sides of this, and, and I'm trying to understand where the disconnect was, because I understand there's a risk with any type of development, but, you know, you're basically saying the same thing that our, Ms. Berkowitz had said earlier as well. And, and so this is, this is concerning me, because, you know, I've also heard, you know, this, in the same, you know, dialogue, that folks knew about the specific plan, had participated in the specific plan, and knew that this was sort of... specific plan, and knew that this was sort of marching ahead in some form or another.
Well, if I could comment on that, again, our situation is a little bit different. We submitted a pre-app on February 26th, we had our pre-application meeting, nothing was mentioned at that time. The only reason I even know anything about this at all is I happened to be at the Building Department for another matter, and I've been working with the planner all along, and he let me know, just because I was sitting in the lobby, "Could I speak to you, because I'm just now, just this moment, just within the past hour, being allowed to discuss it with the public? And I want to let you know, it would help you a lot to get your application in if you're moving forward." If he had not said that, I wouldn't even have found out that this was on the agenda until last Friday, when the agenda was published. So, we didn't know about it, it's just, and I said instantly, "It's just not enough time for us to get it together." If I had known about it 30 days ago, we'd be in. I just, it's just too much work for us to do. And we even had discussions about, "Would you accept a partial package? You know, how much can I really submit? I've got to have a grading plan done, that takes two weeks, I'm out of time." Basically, I had nine working days. So, we didn't really know, and there wasn't really a buyer's beware at all. Again, I was very clear to identify, will this parking be allowed, this parking lot be allowed under the new plan? And it was, yes, conditionally, it's still in there, it's not a disallowed, completely not happening use. So, we would just like to submit, have a little more time to submit, and be able to at least have it under the review process.
Is that... So, then, if you're looking for more time, doesn't this provide you with that additional time?
Well, how it's been explained to me is that if we could get our package in soon, it could be under review while this is being approved. Otherwise, we stop, and we submit the package, whether it's six months from now, three months from now, a year from now, and then we still have to go through the four-to-six-month process. So, for us, if we had known, we could have submitted the package by today, or by yesterday, and it would be going through the process. So, in essence, by doing that, we would have saved four to six months.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question that concerns me a little bit. I understand that you're the property owner's representative. Normal process being what it is, and what occurred in this case, and a series of many, many public hearings and notices of those meetings, you as the developer's representative wouldn't get those unless the property owner gave them to you. But the property owner is the property owner, and the one that we need to notice, and so we would have done that. So, it's one thing for you to stand here, and I understand your position as the representative, but what did the property owner know, and what did he or she do with those notices, and didn't it pique somebody's interest?
Correct. So, as I hoped, I had explained, perhaps I didn't, is they receive, they remember receiving a couple of notices, at which time, they called planning and made an inquiry, and they said, "Under this new proposed plan, do you know if a parking lot, what will be allowed on this property? Because I need to put a parking lot on this property in order to provide for an expanding current tenant." It's a major tenant for him. Basically, they're almost taking an entire building. So, they'll go elsewhere if he can't provide that parking, because it is a requirement by the city that they increase the parking. So, they were told that, "We don't know until it's adopted," but, right now, it's looking like your use, the process will not change for you. If you go in right now, it's a conditional use permit. If you go in later, it's a conditional use permit. It's not a use that would not be allowed, period.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
On the moratorium, can I get some clarification, then? It's an all-or-nothing scenario? Is that, am I understanding that properly, or are there exclusions or specific things that...
The moratorium prohibits any use that is not a use of right under the new, under the proposed Uptown Jefferson specific plan. So, if this parking lot is a conditional use, it would be subject to the moratorium, even if you approve the specific plan and allow it as a conditional use later on.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's clarify, clarification, is it a conditional use in the specific plan, in the upcoming specific plan? Okay, all right. And for clarification of Mr. Ron's question, I'm going to paraphrase your question now. You're thinking cherry-picking? In other words, Mr. Dorson said that all conditional uses, there's no manner in which you can say all conditional uses except this property? Was that where you were going with your question, or is that, because that's my question.
That's, it's much more eloquent than what I was going to say.
He's been here longer, you know.
You're the new guy, at least for the next, you know, 15, 20 minutes.
Not for long.
I think the problem is, is that if you adopt the specific plan, you know, you're looking at a conditional use for property, but you're also looking at it from the aspect of what are the proposed uses around it. So, you're not just looking at it as a conditional use as you would today, you'd be looking at it in light of the rest of the new specific plan.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. And I believe we have one more speaker.
We do, the last speaker is Neil Cleveland.
Mr. Cleveland, good evening.
My name is Neil Cleveland, my address is 28046 Del Rio Road here in Temecula. I'm not really here to speak about the car wash or the parking lot, I'm just more concerned, and it's a concerning approach about the moratorium itself, and what it means to the Jefferson plan. I attended every meeting from the very beginning, and this guy right here, I have to say, did an excellent job. We pushed each other around a little bit, but we always came away with an understanding, and that, the workshop left me with the sense that they were listening to us, the public, the tenants, and the landowners. And so, with that, we find ourselves a couple of years later, three years later, and I'm hearing about this moratorium, and I'm concerned, I have three buildings in this study area, and I've owned them a long time, and I also can see the reality of a project of this nature taking a long time. It's got a long ways to go, from infrastructure to funding, and really, the economics, the analytical part of this will take a while. My concern is the existing non-conforming usages, how those will weather. I haven't got to see the specific plan yet, which is going to tell us what it all says and how we're going to get there, but I guess I'm concerned about existing non-conforming usages. They get morphed into the specific plan, they're there. The takeaway from our meetings were, these are going to stay, they're not going to be kicked out, and that they'll have a dark period. If they go dark, we worked out in, you know, in a tentative idea with the specific plan, that it'd be 12-month period of being dark, and then they could no longer be in existence. So, with that being said, I look at this moratorium, and then I think about tenants. How does this affect tenants, releasing property? How does it affect selling a business that it might be a non-conforming business, a non-conforming usage? And I don't really have a full understanding of how the moratorium, the blowback from it, if there is any, I don't know. Will it affect tenants? Will it affect businesses? Will it affect the releasing? Will it affect the conversion? And then we have the specific plan kind of floating along, and we'll hopefully get to see that, and I'm really excited to look at it and read it and see. I'm a little concerned if there's daunting conditions to non-conforming usages. The park is full of them, the whole area is full of them, and some of them, a lot of them are automotive. I have an automotive tenant, and I'm concerned about keeping him there until we get to that day and age where you can go vertical. And if you look at Old Town, it's probably, in my opinion, another 20 years. But it can happen, but it's going to take time. So, I guess what I'm just saying is, have we stress-tested a little bit to see how it, and maybe I'm not understanding correctly, but how tenants are affected, how users are affected as a result of this moratorium, and is their business affected anyway? So, that's kind of my question, and just looking at it, and I'm looking forward to see the specific plan, to read it, so...
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland, and I'll defer to the city attorney in a minute, but it's my understanding that it has no effect whatsoever on those. And keep in mind, too, that if we do institute this moratorium, and even if we choose to extend it at the end of the 45-day period, goes away with the adoption of the specific plan, which is scheduled to be the end of July, so, and that's it, over and done. So, Peter, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Mr. Cleveland certainly raises some good questions about what do we do with what's there now, but those are really going to be addressed in the specific plan, because that's the plan that, if it's adopted, will be in effect for a long time, and that's what will govern those uses. The moratorium, as we've indicated, probably isn't going to have a life of much more than four or five months at the most, and it does have provisions that exempt from it tenant improvements, building repairs necessary for health and safety, or repairs or construction mandated by the city, so that the upkeep will still be there. But again, the moratorium is really essentially going to be four or five months at the most.
I noticed that it had interior tenant improvements, and then what happens if someone wants to do an exterior, and they're a business? Do they have to be non-conforming, or are they, what if they're, how does that work?
With the moratorium, it's interior tenant improvements. Once the specific plan is approved, then the non-conforming provisions would govern what happens to the business for exterior improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
And you'll have ample time to review and comment on that when the SP comes forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I see no further speakers?
There are no further speakers. Mr. Mayor, I would like to say for the record that we did receive a letter from John Reeves, Ellen Berkowitz, and Janice Ardenston, and in addition to a CD earlier that was handed to me with the visuals, that we will make a part of the record.
Thank you, and that will remain part of the record. So, with that council discussion, what's your collective...
I'll go ahead.
Pleasure. Have at it, Mr. Niggar.
And kick it off. And I'll try to be brief. First, I was very impressed by all the speakers, and very articulate and compelling arguments. And again, I'm going to be brief, why the Jefferson plan, you know, 1999, we set out to do an Old Town plan, and we did several things to revitalize Old Town. As you walk through here, it's hard to imagine, but Old Town was a dead town, really back in 1997, as late as 97, 98, 99, and probably all the way up till 2001, 2002, right in that area. And we set out on a mission to change Old Town, and one of the things we did, among many things, were to remove parking restrictions, change land uses, let people go vertical, all kinds of things. And we used it as an economic development tool, that rezoning, and it worked. I don't have the figure in my head, but from our infusion of redevelopment dollars, i.e. city money, we attracted, geez, I think, well over 100 million or more. Mr. S...
Million dollars.
How much?
We would estimate the city's investment probably leveraged another, you know, $200, $250 million private investment over time.
And that was the goal. So, and so, it's successful, and it's now has momentum, and along with that, along with our partners at Pachanga and people in the wine country, we've created the $650 million a year tourism industry. We're successful. With the success of the Promenade Mall, and success at Old Town, the Jefferson corridor area is dying, so this just wasn't a whim. We set out to say, "Listen, we need to do something similar." Not necessarily similar in type and style, but similar in wanting to achieve an economic development tool for a dying part of our city, and there was a lot of opportunity, and so we set out to do it. I think having 27 meetings is pretty compelling. I don't know how much more notice people can get. But this issue here tonight is not about a car wash, it's not about a parking lot, it's about, should we take a pause or a breath just to catch our breath and see where we're at? Let me tell you, I'm okay with taking that pause, but I'm also okay with a car wash on this site, and I'm also okay with the parking lot for the school's expansion. And so, I'm going to invite the applicants here to meet with me. I don't know that I'm going to go champion your project, but I'm not very certain I'm going to vote to continue the moratorium. I understand wanting to take a breath, but what really bothers me here is that we have business deals on the table, okay? And we're saying, "Listen, we got a better business deal for you, we're going to increase the zoning of your property." What if they don't want that? Now, I understand we have the right and the police power to rezone their property, I get that, and there are times when we have to do that, particularly when the public good is involved. But on the flip side of that is, you got a contract, you got people wanting to sell their property, they've owned it for a number of years, they've paid money to remediate it because of a leak, now they find a way to get out of it, and it may not be what we want as a city. I don't necessarily want to see a car wash on that site. I don't think it's the best use for the property, but, and that's where I'm a little conflicted. Not the best use, but may not be our call, maybe it is our call. I feel a little conflicted there. Anyway, same thing with the parking lot. Jeez, they have a tenant, the tenant wants to come in and expand the school, it's a, they need the parking lot, it's going to be a conditioned use in the SP anyway. You know what? We should streamline that process, not cloud it, not hold it up. That's my opinion. So, unless my staff can give me something in the next 45 days during this, I'm going to vote for the moratorium, because I think we need to take a breath and look at it and communicate with everybody, but I'm not convinced that I do want it as a permanent one, only because for the reasons that I said. I will finish with this, as always, I really value the opinion of my colleagues, okay? So, you know, if I'm wrong, or if you have another opinion, I definitely want to hear it.
Thank you, Mike. We've got Dr. Ron in.
Oh, you're wrong. No, I'm, it's getting late. Are you sure you want to do this, sir? This is going to be fun, huh? This is a difficult thing to talk about, it's a difficult project and moratorium to address. I mean, I'm definitely struggling with the issue. I appreciate your comment on, you know, taking a pause, because I think that's really, you know, how I envision this myself. You know, 45 days, I'm comfortable with, the city attorney mentioned, you know, potentially four months, I'm less comfortable with, right? I'd like to see this move forward very efficiently and very rapidly, because I understand the economic consequences. And like I mentioned earlier, when we're talking about these, you know, moratoriums on water and everything else that we're being faced with, the last thing we want to do is get in the way of economic development in our region. So, I really think it's important that you understand that perspective. You know, I'm curious, because Buzz, I apologize, Mike's got that stuck in my mind now, but you mentioned, you know, a proposal for, you know, potentially doing the project, but having an agreement that, you know, retires that at such time that the specific plan is approved and moving forward and so forth. You know, my concern would be a return of investment, and what's put into that, and what that period of time would look like and so forth, but it's an interesting concept. And so, as we move through this moratorium, and like Mr. Niggar said, I'd really encourage those ideas to come out more fully, because, you know, there may be some potential solutions, and much like with the parking lot as well, that's a little bit easier to, you know, put a separate use on into the future, unlike a car wash, but it's a little bit easier to deal with. So, I don't want to foreclose on those ideas, because I think they're very, very interesting. You know, the... You know, the, the questions about water use and so forth, I have to say, I didn't find quite as compelling because we are in a drought, and in fact, as far as I understand it, this is the worst drought that we've had on, on sort of biologic record for the last 1,200 years. And so we're in a serious situation, and so saying, you know, use a car wash because it's good at saving water, I'm, I'm having a hard time sort of savvying that. And, but I understand the efficiency of the new facilities and so forth, but that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to close down the existing facilities either, right? And so I'm, I'm struggling with the, the concept because we're, we're at so many different sort of competing issues right now within the city. I'd, I've got to have a lot of notes here. The questions, I think, well, let me just end with this thought, and, and it is, you know, like I say, I'm very concerned about the length of time it'll take to move through this process. I understand taking a pause at this point may be a good thing for all involved. Like I mentioned earlier, as I understand it, this isn't the last bite at the apple, so to speak. So hopefully this process continues and everybody remains engaged. But I'd also state that the, you know, my interest in the moratorium, as time goes on, becomes less and less, and so I'd like to see this move forward in a very efficient manner. But I agree with Councilman Nigard that perhaps now is a good time to take a short pause and, and really explore the specific plan and the ramifications of future land use in the, in the area. So thank you.
Mary Ann?
From everything I've heard, we probably should have done this sooner rather than now, after people have, have moved forward and, and made an investment. And I realize that, that the investment was already on, on the books. But first, I'd like to say thank you for, for cleaning up that parcel. I, it's been horrible as long as I can remember, and I've lived here almost 30 years, so I don't remember anything on that corner other than a, a gas station that never seemed to be successful, unfortunately, and then hearing that we've got major hazmat issues. So first of all, thank you for doing that. If we do this as a temporary solution to accommodate the process that will eventually lead to the formal approval of the Jefferson specific plan, I'm concerned about the length of time that will take, and is there any way we can speed it up? And I will ask my colleagues who are more familiar with that process than I am, because certainly you have concerns. We've done everything we can think of to promote higher education in this community, and so certainly I think that expanding, adding, adding a parking lot to, to, I'm going to call that project number two, makes sense to me. So, you know, I look forward to seeing that one when we find a solution to this timetable or to this issue. And I am not ready to say that we're not going to have a, a car wash on that corner. I think I'd just like for us to get to that point where we have the, the approval of the specific plan to see what the rest of Jefferson Corridor is going to look like. So I will defer to my colleagues to say, is it possible to speed up the process that will get us to that formal approval?
Well, thanks, Mary Ann. I too have a lot of notes that I jotted down, and my comment on that, the 45 days is very similar. I think, I mean, we have to look at this realistically. If we're going to approve an interim ordinance that gives us 45 days of a moratorium, if we don't do something within these 45 days and then consider extending it, and from what I'm hearing, there's going to be resistance to extending it, then we're foolish. So we've got to make sure that accompanying the passage of this ordinance, if that's what we're going to do, we need to have some kind of an intense educational program for the council, and probably the commission as well, to learn about the SP. Otherwise, we'll bring it back in 45 days and we'll be no different than we are today. And that just doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm all for taking a breath, but we've got to breathe a lot in those 45 days, and we've got to do something. So assuming that we're capable of and will do that, then I would go ahead and support it, but if we're not going to do that, or we're not able to do that, then I don't think it makes any sense. I had the benefit of being on the subcommittee, helping to formulate the draft SP, so I have seen a lot of the vision, and I know you haven't seen it yet. And I come, having seen that, I, I come with a little bit different perspective on what I, just my opinion, but from what I think ought to be on a critical entryway corner. And I wouldn't want to see a car wash there, and I have to commend you, it's a beautiful looking car wash, but that isn't what personally I would want to see as the signature to a whole new part of Temecula. And I, I think back to days early on in our cityhood, in the mid-'90s, when we had a similar situation, albeit bigger, with the corner of Inez and Winchester, and, and an application into build a Walmart, and a, a bright young, I'll call him a politician, stood up and said, no, Temecula can do better. And the end result was the Promenade Mall sits there today, and of course, that was Jeff Stone's comment now in the state senate, and he was absolutely right. So I'm not prepared to say at this time whether, you know, we should or shouldn't see a car wash, but I think if, if we move forward with the specific plan, at least in some semblance of what's currently being presented, we need to have the vision that goes along with that plan. And if we start to piecemeal uses that are not in keeping with that vision, beautifully constructed though they may be, we've destroyed that vision. And to me, the, the whole planning effort really goes for naught if we look at one here, one there, another one down the road, another one down the road, and before you know it, the, the SP has no integrity. So I think we have to see it more. Everybody has to see it, decide for yourself what you think of the various corners we're talking about. What I don't want, and I don't think any of us want, and believe me, I don't mean this to sound antagonistic in any way, but I don't want people to look out 20 or 25 years from now and say, boy, those people had tremendous vision, and they did a wonderful job in creating a whole new area in Temecula, but why did they put a car wash in the middle of it? That would break my heart, not to have a car wash there, but to know that we didn't fulfill the integrity of that vision. Just my opinion. One thing too about, about water, whatever we do with this issue, we learned long ago in forming this city years ago, and most of us have been here a long time, most of us, Dr. Ron. Is that you don't make long-term decisions based on short-term conditions. And to, again, impair the vision of the new specific plan because we're concerned about a temporary drought, I don't know when it's going to end, but I know it's going to end, I don't think that's wise. I don't think that's a good strategy in running a business, in running a city, or in running anything else. So I, I wouldn't, while I'm concerned about water, certainly, I don't think that should be a consideration in this issue. And that's really what I've got. So I would support moving forward with the 45-day moratorium, but only if we can ensure that we can accompany some education with it during those 45 days. So I'm going to look to our city manager, our director of community development, what can we do in those 45 days?
Yeah, in looking at the schedule, we, we have a pretty aggressive schedule. We anticipate having a, a draft SP in about two weeks, and, you know, we, we were envisioning going back to the steering committee, May 27th, Traffic Safety Commission, May 28th, Community Services Commission, June 8th, and then Old Town Local Review Board, June 8th. If you were to adopt a 45-day urgency ordinance, it would take us to June 12th, in which case we would have to be back before the council, June 9th, for the extension. That may give us an avenue to be able to put the, the SP out there for review, and, so they can see the vision, see, you know, how difficult it was to put that vision into a plan. You know, we engage architects and planners, and we tested several models to be able to come up with a really, really comprehensive product, so.
Okay, so I, I'm hearing that at the very least, we could have meetings, you could have meetings with the council individually, so we don't have brown act issues.
And also the council, yes.
Before the 45-day period, so that everyone has a working knowledge of at least the draft that's going to come forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Another option, and Mr. Thorson and I were talking about this, yeah, sure, we could, we could do the, the one-on-one educational intensive briefings on the SP, draft SP, but another option is bringing it back into a public meeting before the city council and, and doing more of a cursory, it's, it's, we're not seeking any action, but more of an informative presentation on where we're at in two weeks or in four weeks. I think we'd probably have to hit the council meeting in two weeks, but that, that is something else that, that we, the council could consider.
Personally, I prefer we do that so that we have it in a public setting and give everybody the opportunity to see it, and we, it, it wouldn't be, as I understand it, a, a meeting where we would necessarily solicit input, but we could at least become as familiar as we possibly can, and the public can as well.
Right, the goal being to bring the balance of the council completely up to speed as speed as the subcommittee has been, and some of the folks, stakeholders have been over the last couple of years, so that is an option.
What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
I like that idea.
Well, yeah, I think we, we bring it back, is, is, are we saying a workshop item?
I said workshop, but...
It would be a, a presentation item at a regular council meeting.
I like the idea, Mr. Mayor, because think about it realistically, my colleagues is, is when they bring it to, let's say we didn't do this, and they brought it to us in July, I don't know how in one meeting we're going to really peel through a specific plan and really drill down and start to... So, so this is very appropriate to actually get a head start and have a look at it.
Well, especially considering that it's going to be new to some of us.
Exactly.
Right. So are we talking about bringing it back in two weeks or four weeks?
We, we would couch it as a status update, that's probably...
But, but an in-depth presentation.
I think, Armando, two weeks? Can we, Luke, can we prepare for that?
He's going to say no.
That's right. We're not allowing you to say no, so...
Say no, so...
We'll make it happen, we always do.
You always do, I agree, so I appreciate that. Okay, with that...
I make one last comment.
You certainly may.
Again, to the applicants, you know, you, you made a, you made a very good point from a planning point of view, you know, what would we like to see there? I, I, you know, from a planning point of view, I understand that, but I just want to reiterate, I, you know, why it, it may not be exactly what we want, I'm not that totally against it, so if you guys want to, I know you wanted to meet with me, and you might have been trying to meet with other council members, I presume you were, you're more than welcome to, I'd welcome meeting with you, you, we can drill down on it, and that way when, when the specific plan comes forward, at least for this council member, but I'm sure the same thing applies to you guys, we have an understanding of what you want to do, and that goes, Madam Yu as well, with the parking lot and the expansion, okay?
Okay.
And so I'll make the, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Very good.
To introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
Actually, this would be for approval and...
For, pardon?
For approval.
Okay, you don't need to introduce it?
No.
Okay. And that'll be, yeah, that is different, and that'll be 45 days?
Right, this is for the 45-day moratorium.
Okay, and as part of that motion, contingent upon bringing back the SP in two weeks?
Sure.
No, you, yeah, you can make a contingent on that, and we'll bring back a status update on...
I would prefer that we would.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
But make it comprehensive. I, I mean, I mean, let's have a look at the specific plan.
Yeah, everything we've got.
Okay.
And if it takes, you know, a while, it'll take a while, that's okay.
All right.
Okay, do you have a second for that motion?
I need to read it too.
And a second? Okay, please cast your vote.
This would be an interim ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula temporarily prohibiting certain uses and construction in the proposed Uptown Jefferson specific plan area, pending city council consideration of the proposed Uptown Jefferson specific plan and finding the action exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 10561B3 of the SEQA guidelines.
Okay, thank you. With that, please cast your votes. And that's, I, I think it's fair to say for all four of us, that's kind of a reluctant 4-0, but a necessary 4-0, so good discussion, and we will bring it back, and certainly anybody who wants to come back in, in two weeks and get a better idea of what the specific plan is and what it looks like and what it means to specific properties, by all means, come and join us, or, or watch it on TV, or streaming live on the internet. So with that, that takes care of item 14. To, at least a more fun subject, item 15 is the appointment of the recommended Michael R. McCracken as city council member to fill the vacancy on the city council for the unexpired term ending December 13th, 2016. Mr. Nigard.
Maybe we should put this item off another two weeks.
It's kind of late.
You know, I'm just, I'm just messing with you, Mike, okay? All right? We had a discussion, we took the time, many, many fine applicants applied. We talked about how the process just, just didn't lend itself to, you know, spending, if we really wanted to dig into it as thoroughly as we all wanted to, we would have been literally spending a week in interviews, it just, it was straight, because we had many, many fine applicants. But Mike McCracken brings everything that the city needs at this point in time, and I happily make the motion to go ahead and approve him to be appointed to the city council.
I don't think we need any further discussion, all that occurred last week, so we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Oh, the tension.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what the outcome will be, but...
Congratulations, Mr. Ron, you're not the new kid.
And with that, council member McCracken, if you would please go to the podium and join Randy, our city clerk, who will officially swear you in, at which time you'll take your seat up here for the short balance of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick point of order, is, is your family here? Would you like them to join you?
Hi, sir. Family, friends, yes.
If you'd like to bring them up, you're welcome to do that. Only you will take the oath, but you're welcome to have them up here with you. We often do that.
In a way, the whole family takes the oath, but, you know, yes.
That's true.
That's very true.
I, I have to ask then, I know we already took the vote, but for, for Michael's family, are you all supportive?
Yes.
You're okay with them doing this?
You're excited and...
Very good.
We're excited too. With that, you're up, Randy.
Sure.
Ready?
Yes.
Use your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael R. McCracken.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I am about to enter...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, council member.
Mike, you might want to watch her. We always have to be careful with her.
Yes, Randy's, yes.
The changing of the...
Changing of the nameplate.
If you'd like to say a few words, please do it from your new seat.
You feel older now?
And the happiest, second happiest person in the room is Matt Ron, who is no longer the newbie.
And I repeat, it took me 10 years.
You filled the role well.
Nine years ago. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, there's some special people that I'd like to thank as well, I want to miss some of you, but I apologize, but my wife, of course, and my daughters who are not in town, my family, the Jays back here, and my fellow chief, Chief Cook. And there's two people in the audience you may not know, I'm very much familiar with, I've come to love them as a family, and they take care of me and give me good mentorship, that's Peg and Jimmy Moore.
Yay!
I've, I've met them several times before, and they've learned to like me for some reason, I don't know why, but I, I thank you for liking, I appreciate that. And then lastly, this has been a long meeting already, I came on as the community service commissioner... Commissioner, and that department has come in, welcomed me, trained me, mentored me, big time. So for those of you that are watching, you haven't seen this before, thank you, and I'm ready to go to work.
All right, well, we're ready to put you to work. And if you pass muster with Peg and Jimmy Moore, you're obviously okay with us, so thank you for that. That takes care of our regular agenda for the evening. We have a few reports, if we indeed have them. Mr. Adams, do we have a city manager's report tonight?
The only thing, just like to welcome Councilmember McCracken to the team, to the family, and look forward to working with you, sir, and congratulations again.
And a city attorney's report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had a close session tonight on labor, there are no actions to report under the BRIM Act, but the council did give direction to the staff.
Great, and with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting in May 12th.
Oh, let Mike.
Second. There you go.
All right.
And before we adjourn, comment, we have a reception.
We do, thank you for that. We have a little reception out, just outside the council chambers, in honor of our newest council members. So everybody who's still here, it's getting late, you're welcome to join us outside briefly or not so briefly, depending on what you want to do. And with that, seeing no objection, we stand adjourned.